Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Rutland City Board of Aldermen meeting for Monday, July 18th, 2022. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll start with outside the rail Paula McCann from Evergreen Cemetery. Paula, please step up, state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, thank you for hearing me. Can you hear me?
You can hear me.
Troublemaker. I'm here tonight as President of the Board of Trustees of the Evergreen Park and Cemetery Association. That is what we were actually staturellally commissioned as in 1862. And I also represent the over 4,000 deed holders who expect that they or their lineal descendants will be able to be buried in Evergreen Cemetery. We're a cemetery of 75 acres within the city boundary. We've operated as a cemetery from the early 1700s forward. We were staturellally commissioned in 1862. It's 2022 and we are a part of this city and we're coming to this city now because we can no longer be self-sustaining. That's just the reality. We have been self-sustaining for the last 163 years since 1862, if my math's correct. Someone check that? Anyway, we have worked very hard to continue the cemetery, which costs at minimum $120,000 a year to operate. That is the staff salaries, that is workers' comp, which is $9,000 a year, another $4,000 and other kinds of insurance we must carry. We are an IRS 501(c)(4), which means that people do not get charitable deductions for giving us money, so we can't fundraise the normal way a charity can. We are not allowed to be a 501(c)(3) because we are considered by federal law a civic organization. If I were trying to convert us to a 501(c)(3), because I am a lawyer and I do that kind of stuff unfortunately, it would take years. Cemeteries throughout Vermont are seeing very hard times financially. It's not just us, we just happen to be one of the biggest and I think we've lasted as one of the longest. But the cities had to take over several cemeteries because they have run out of funding, can't be self-sustaining. We have not. We actually have 25 acres still left to develop as burial. We have tried to promote green burial as a more environmentally friendly way of disposing of your body upon death. We can do green burial anywhere in the cemetery. We actually had our first green burial, but a lot of people just don't know about us. So we're coming to the community now, meaning not only Rutland City, but Rutland Town, and saying we need help. And this is really a time when the communities that want us to stay open have to come together with us and make a decision. Do you want Evergreen to continue to be a city park and cemetery by helping us with funding, by helping us with services, by volunteering time? Or are you ready to shutter this cemetery because we cannot sustain ourselves after the next year? After next year, we don't know what to do. We're trying to think about fundraisers, we're trying to do a proprietary database because, believe it or not, we don't have internet at our office at the cemetery because we can't afford it and no one wants to donate it. Our records, which go back more than 100 years plus, we lost some in a fire in the 1800s, but our records are paper records in binders in a closet in the office at the cemetery. This is what keeps me awake. More than 4,000 deeds in paper, not scanned in. There is software, one of them is called Cemetery Find. It would cost us about $3,600 to access that software. It would cost another $4,000 to scan in our deeds, the permits, and all written material associated with each deed to a plot. But once we have that database built, we can charge people on a paywall, on a website, to access that data. We get two to three phone calls every day, every week, of people looking for their lineage, people looking for death records of their relatives. They're asking us to send them photos, they're asking if there are empty plots available that are already purchased by family, because plots are expensive. And that's the other thing that keeps me awake. In all of this time, no one's done a survey to figure out if we have bodies buried in each plot. Families have moved away in the 1800s, in the 1900s. They purchased plots, they own them for 100 years, they have the right for burial for 100 years. But there's supposed to be an ongoing survey on those deadlines to determine whether those plots are being used, because after 100 years, we can resell a plot if it's not used, if no one's buried there, after we contact the family. So I'm asking Rutland City and I will be asking Rutland Town and the people who read the paper to tell us what they want us to do. Are we going to come together and continue Evergreen? Or is there just no appetite for that, no money for that, no energy around that?
Alderman DePoy.
Paula, is there a way with your 501(c)(4) that you can do a GoFundMe and maybe get some information out to the ancestors of people that are still living that, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm mayor today, I mean, everybody in the city probably has someone
Oh, yes.
of their lineage buried there.
Right, but for us to, for us to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Can you do a GoFundMe under 501(c)(4)? You were saying you can't do any...
It's not tax deductible. I mean, anybody can set up a GoFundMe page.
Yeah.
The issue is finding the people who might be related to the people who are buried in the cemetery takes a lot of staff time. We don't necessarily have that staff time. We have one person who works a few hours a day, several days a week. And her job is bookkeeping, keeping our insurance up, issuing checks to the staff, and keeping us going. So I would say that if anyone is interested, and I have put out my personal email in the letter to the editor, it was published, and I asked people who were concerned about Evergreen to please email me. I've not had one email. I had one phone call from this very nice gentleman who came here tonight, one phone call, concerned about this issue.
Alderman Davis? Hold on, excuse me, sir?
Sorry.
Can you just hang on one second, please? Sorry, we have to, we, just wait till I call on you, if that's okay? Is that all right?
So what I've thought about is a letter to the families we can find, like the Billings family and Mary Ashcroft and I have talked about this, her family is buried there, her husband is buried there.
There's a lot of dignitaries buried there.
Yes, there is.
So has there been a reach out to Montpelier or some source there, historical, even if Montpelier looks at some of the plots of the senators, the governors that are buried in that cemetery?
I actually did that research back in 2012. I've only been the president since 2018, I think. It feels like forever, but I owned what was called the Del Bianco House. I owned a house that was contiguous to the cemetery and I walked in the cemetery every morning and it disturbed me that Senator Foote's grave, Solomon Foote, who actually wrote the rules of procedure for the U.S. Senate and was an advisor to Abraham Lincoln, his gravesite was completely grown over. The Foote family, on his side, has run out. And so a group of lawyers came together and we cleaned his site because he was a lawyer and first dean of what is now Castleton, but...
So my question really, I kind of got off track and I apologize. You talk about employees, what number of employees do you have? And is it typical that a cemetery has employees?
We have seasonal employees. They are a superintendent who works during the summer with two full-time employees because we have to, we have two push mowers and one riding mower for about 47 acres currently in use. And to get between the cemetery headstones, you need those push mowers and a weed whacker and you need people and it takes time. And believe me, if we can't keep up with the mowing, we hear from it. We hear from the people who are upset that the cemetery doesn't look beautiful. So we have those employees, they come on around April, early May, to get ready for Memorial Day, which is one of our busiest weekends, of course, and then through the summer, because we've got to keep up with the grass, as you all know, it grows very quickly here, especially when we have a lot of rain, and to also dig the graves. We still hand dig the graves at Evergreen Cemetery. First of all, we've always done it that way, and second, we don't have money for machinery. We have those mowers and a very old truck. And that's what we have for equipment in the cemetery and shovels and very strong people who dig, hand dig a cemetery six feet deep with perfectly straight walls and floor.
So just want to follow up. Do you establish a relationship with the area churches or have you for donations similar to some of the other cemeteries here in the city that do?
We have relationships with the funeral directors and they have relationships with the various community churches. But several of the community churches already choose to offer burial, a columbarium or a memorial garden. The Episcopal Church Trinity, they go into their backyard area and dig a hole and pour the ashes in. And that is legal and perfectly fine. People want to be buried at that church and that's great. But other churches offer the same thing, they offer columbariums or memorial gardens. So, and of course, there are church affiliated cemeteries as well, but we started as a very large public cemetery when there weren't a lot of churches or other options. We also started as a park and I'll tell you, during COVID, we had people coming and working out at the cemetery. And it was great. That's what we're there for. We have children who learn how to ride bikes in the cemetery. We also have had to work with the Rutland City Police on drug dealing in the cemetery. I'm not sure people understand that sometimes the danger our cemetery workers are in. I picked up, luckily with rubber gloves, a bunch of Green Monkey little packets and I was told it was very good that I had picked them up with rubber gloves because it's meth laced with fentanyl and it's in a porous package. And if you touch it, like the woman who just picked up the dollar bill and had a major problem, you can get these drugs into your system. So working with the city police, turning things over to them, taking photos of the evidence we recover, those are all things that I never thought I'd do as a president of a cemetery, but I'm doing them. But we need, we need the community to help make the decision on all of this. And so we're asking for either the opportunity to work with a committee of the city to see what can be done, but we're also using this forum to put out a call to the community to say, if you know how to take down trees, we have over 100 of them that are ready to fall.
So I'm going to keep taking questions from the aldermen and I'll take the outside and any additional questions. So Alderwoman Tadio.
I'm just wondering if there's a precedent where other cities have funded cemeteries before in Vermont? Is that something that other cities are doing?
Well, other cities, under Secretary of State rules and state law, if a cemetery, any cemetery, runs out of funds, they have to offer what they have to the municipality that they are located within. The city can put their hands up and say, no, we're not going to take you, but the reality is that the city has had to take cemeteries that have run out of funds. And so the city takes the land, takes any assets, takes any equipment, and then they become responsible for those cemeteries. So in a way, yes, the cities are the last, or the towns are the taker of last resort.
Alderman Torrey.
Thanks. So I'm happy if there's people outside the rail that want to comment on the issue, but I do think it sounds like there's some conversation to be had here and at least more attention brought to the issue. And so I would like to refer it to committee. I don't know if it's CED or general, if anybody has any thoughts. So I'll refer it to general unless anybody has any.
Okay.
Can you explain what that means because we're really unclear?
We're referring to committee for who's the committee? Further discussion?
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to refer to general committee, it's been seconded. Any discussion? Okay?
Anybody outside the rail too?
Okay. Is there any, any further questions? Would you, sir, would you like to ask a question?
I wanted to ask if there's any tax benefit in recording all what's on paper into a much more permanent cover and I would donate to it.
I'm sorry, any recording in what?
Oh, you say it's on paper now.
To transfer the records.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It would, that project, the IT project to put internet into the office, scan all of the deeds, buy the software and create that, that proprietary database would be about $10,000, unless some business wants to step up and help us with the scanning.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention a couple of things in a historical perspective. I've talked to Paula two or three times over the last year. John Wing was in once with Paula and Mary Ashcroft was in another time. And we took it under advisement and I had the city attorney do some investigation about what our responsibility was. And it is, as has been described, as when an association such as this one is set up and it does dissolve, it can be taken over by the city, but it does not have to. Paula has mentioned that we are responsible for a couple of the cemeteries here in town currently, and that is true, but they are cemeteries which are about one acre, two acres, they're very small. It involves really literally hundreds of dollars that we contract out and is really not a burden to the city at this point. This is 77 acres, of which 47 acres are currently in use. And your folks do a wonderful job over there. My mom is buried there. I have nephews and nieces and we all have people over there that we either know or are related to that are buried over there. And it's not that I don't want to be able, you know, offer help, it's just that I have a responsibility to the taxpayers of the city. And from my perspective, this is going to be a tough burden to bear if the city of Rutland is inevitably the one that is going to bear the responsibility. And the way that I foresee it right now is unless some people start coming out of the woodwork and maybe with this, you know, discussion we're having tonight in front of the cameras, that there will be some folks that can offer some help or have some ideas about what to do. But as of right now, you know, we're, we're having a tough time doing the job with the amount of employees that we have right now and it would be a burden on the city of Rutland. So I just want to say that. I'm not, I am sympathetic to what's going on over there. I don't want to see it lay fallow. It's a sacred place, but these are the things that I have to worry about and I think we all have to worry about as far as the taxpayers go.
Great. Alderman DePoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I thoroughly agree with the mayor on the burden to the taxpayer, but this is the type of forum that is going to bring forward people that I think you haven't realized yet, Mr. Kirby being one of them. And I think I just heard Mr. Kirby saying he was going to try to help you with, I'm sorry?
Financially. And we are very grateful for that.
You know, you're here in this public forum and, you know, using bully pulpit here to ask for help and I think you're in the perfect place for that. It's bringing out people, you're gonna, I know you're going to hear from more. Also, I support this going to committee because we're not sending it to committee to talk about what kind of funding or taking over the cemetery. I mean, that's, at this point, I don't think we're at, we're anywhere near that point. But by having this kind of publicity for you and for the cemetery, which, you know, we have many people that are buried there, the mayor's mother and I'm sure many, many other family members from people around this community and frankly, around the United States and may, I mean, quite possibly the world. It's a very large cemetery and there's more out there that can be used. So you may even realize some funds that are out there that could go for the other 30 acres that aren't in current burial use, you know, it's a park, as you said.
Right.
So...
And it actually borders city park.
Yeah, so I, so this is, I think, a very good thing, you know, process that this is going through. And anything that we can do to help, we're going to do to help.
Thank you.
You know, I think, as I said, I think we're far short of the city having to take this burden on
Right.
for the taxpayers, but, you know, let's, let's work from here and, you know, go forward and hopefully we can kind of get you out of the red.
Well, I just wanted to reassure the people of this community that we are doing everything we can possibly think of doing, including my suggestion from our last board meeting, which was a Day of the Dead celebration. And I just happen to know someone who has a theater. But we also will be having a public board meeting in September and we will announce that for September and invite the public, people who hold deeds, to come and talk with us and just give us their ideas. But just a heads up notice, we have been working on this issue for several years now and I didn't want to come to the city in crisis. That's why we're coming here a year early. And actually, we started talking back in March of 2021, but COVID has delayed a lot of things here, so. But thank you very much for listening to our plight and thank you for your help. And I look forward to working with or talking with the general committee if it goes there and continuing these discussions.
Great. We have a motion to refer to general committee, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair Chetone, who's the chair?
If you want to give your contact information to Alderman Franco, he can, he can reach out to you. Thank you very much.
Do you want to say something?
I just want to say that the building...
Excuse me. If you step up to the podium, state your name, that would be great.
The building that she's referencing is one of the buildings that my parents own. We go by Merchants Hall, it's on 4042 Merchants Row here in Rutland. The only thing I want to share, because I know that I am not even staying this long, I don't know how any of you are, is that that building, sorry, that building, according to the fabulously helpful people at the Rutland Historic Society, which we are not allowed to be a part of the National Register because we didn't replicate a copper facade when my parents bought the building from Mark Foley Jr., Mark Foley Sr. So because of all of this, I became a historian. I decided to go to school again and for the third time, and I didn't even finish. All I learned was that you need to find history for yourself, because history repeats itself, repeats itself, repeats itself, is what Gertrude Stein said about it. And the Historic Society told me that my building was built in 1887 and it was built in 1847. And I had to prove it myself by ripping down walls and getting permits. And, and now we ran out of money and I've waited 14 years to try to come back and get more permits. So history has to be done by the people and this gentleman that's here willing to pay is not alone of every age. And I just think that the reality is that we're all really distracted with something much bigger than this one cemetery and I believe that this will fall into the hands of this committee and to the city. And I don't know what to do past that other than help. And I went to the library last year and nobody asked for my help. And I went to here now and I pray that you'll ask for my help if you need it, because this town is special. And now that I live here again and I drive around from 11:00 PM to 2:00 AM and watch people walk on Door Drive nodding out, makes me want to cry in front of all of you. I am giving them food, I am putting a fridge out back of Merchants Hall that was stolen twice. I live in New York City and this town is 10 times scarier than any borough there. It's terrifying what's happened to our town. So if you're not willing to fight for it, please let me, but I will never sit in a chair and I will never be on a board, I don't have time because I love all of you, so have a good night, thanks.
Sir, can you just, can you just state your name and say your residence for me?
Is that what I have to do?
I would like that.
My name's Jacob William Patorde and I reside, well, my legal address is 646 Rice Willis Road, Castleton, Vermont, but my parents own 14 properties in this town and I'm trying to get enough money to own one myself.
Thank you, Jacob. Okay, moving on outside the rail, I'm going to, that's your name, Ted Plamanos, did I get that right? From the Rutland Public School Systems, this is the state education tax rate update. Please do.
I'll be glad to.
Thank you very much.
Sharon, just give it to the whole staff.
I will. I just wanted to take one before.
Thank you very much for making time for me this evening. My name is Ted Plamanos, I'm the Finance Director of Rutland City Public Schools. I work closely with Mary Markowski and a number of the people in leadership positions with the city and Mary suggested that this might be a good time for me to visit with you and just provide a brief update and overview as regards to the education tax rates, which have recently been issued by the state of Vermont. So I have just a couple of pages that we can allude to, I'll walk through these briefly and actually, if you have any questions, please stop me along the way, okay? There is not a whole lot of new information budget wise from what I did review with the city board back in January, but this hopefully will provide a brief refresher. So if you could turn to page two, you'll see there's good news. There are two tax rates that we talk about that are related to education. One is referred to as the homestead tax rate, the other is the non-homestead tax rate. And as you probably know, but just to be sure, these two tax rates respectively are incorporated into city tax rates. So for example, the homestead tax rate is combined with the municipal tax rate to make what's called the total residential tax rate. So obviously, to the extent that the homestead tax rate goes up or down, that's going to drive the total for the city along with the municipal. And similarly with the non-homestead tax rate, that component is included in your non-residential rate along with the municipal rate. So the last couple of years when we have come to the city alderboard, we've been talking about an increase in these rates. As you can see on page two, this year, there's a seven cent decline in both the homestead rate, which drives directly from the school district's own budget, as well as the non-homestead rate, which is an average basically of all school district budgets statewide, which is then adjusted. So that's the good news. The less good news is that this entire decline, and then some, is due to what is probably a one-time initiative by the state. Many of you may have read that the state's education fund ran an unprecedented surplus in the last year of $90 million. It's really interesting how that's moved around because many of you might remember it wasn't more than a couple of years ago when the state was talking about an unprecedented deficit in the education fund of well over $100 million. So I don't know a whole lot about that, but just watching those trends makes me believe that it's difficult to predict year to year exactly where that's going to go, especially as we emerge from COVID times. But the bottom line here is, and while I don't want to get into a whole lot of details, I want to give you the big picture and I can always answer more specific questions later, but the big picture... later, but the big picture is absent that very significant use of the ninety million dollar surplus, which was used by the state to increase something called the yield, which is a factor used in tax rate calculations. The state increased the yield from about eleven thousand three hundred dollars the year before by two thousand dollars, or eighteen percent, up to thirteen thousand three hundred this year. And that had a very significant impact. It, it probably reduced our tax rate by as much as twenty cents. So what I'm telling you is, absent that impact, and these are rough estimates, the tax rate probably would have gone up. And this is something that we're keeping in mind, because again, there's no guarantee that there's going to be a similar benefit to taxpayers across Vermont next year. One of the reasons that the city's tax rate, that this homestead tax rate would have gone up absent the favorable yield is something called the CLA, which is another factor used in these tax calculations called the Common Level of Appraisal. And without getting into too much detail, the, the point is, that's intended as an adjustment of property values from one town to another across the state. And the CLA for Rutland City has been declining in recent years. That has a tendency to increase the tax rate. And this increase, this drop in the CLA from about ninety-three percent the year before to under eighty-nine percent this year probably was responsible for something like a five to eight cent increase effect, which now has been more than offset by the yield. So we, we got a lot of help on the yield, which more than offset the hurt in the CLA and the impact of higher expenses. So just to give you an idea, the, the local expenses for the school district, absent funding by the, the federal government, went up about one and three-quarters million dollars. And absent any of these effects, that would have had the impact of raising by several cents at least the tax rate. So we are already looking ahead to the fiscal twenty-four budget, which we're going to start working on in the fall, to ask ourselves, what can we do, knowing that there are likely to be some cost drivers increasing our costs and tax rates? And, and along those lines, let me ask you to flip to page three, so I can show you a little bit more about what I'm talking about. You, you may recall this chart from January when, when we met, but what this shows is total compensation costs for the five hundred or so full-time employees, as well as part-time employees in the district. For the twenty-two budget, that was this, for this past year that we just finished, as well as now the twenty-three budget, which is the fiscal year that we're just starting. And you can see that if you look at salaries, the cash salaries, as well as employee benefits, the two of those making total compensation, you can see that we were able to hold total salary costs to an increase of less than one percent, an increase of about a quarter of a million dollars. Benefits costs were up by about half a million dollars and more like three and a half percent in total. And those costs would have been up more, except for the fact that the district administration and leadership used one of the levers that we do have. We don't control benefits costs, we have some control over salary costs as we negotiate with the unions. But what we do control, of course, is the total number of employees working with the union. And as you can see on the bottom line there, in the fiscal year twenty-two budget, we had five hundred and one full-time employees excluding some federal funding called ESAR, which I'll just ask you to ignore, because we're going to look at apples to apples here. And then for the fiscal twenty-three budget, a decrease of twelve positions to four hundred and eighty-nine excluding some federally funded positions. So you can see what we did was we decreased the number of employees district-wide by about two and a half percent, which obviously helped to offset those total costs. We are likely going to have to go through a very similar exercise for next year, because we do have anticipated costs coming in that are going to run above even a normal kind of couple of percent trend. And for that, let me ask you to turn to page four. These numbers probably will not surprise many of you, but it's just to kind of provide a context and framework. Early this year, in January of twenty twenty-two, the school district reached agreement with its two largest labor unions, which represent about eighty percent of our district employees, and these are teachers and educational support professionals. And the salary agreements that we reached call for three point five percent salary increases in this new year, twenty twenty-three, and again in twenty twenty-four, which will be the upcoming budget year. So we know right there that we're going to be facing a headwind of a three and a half percent increase. And, you know, while that's an important impact on our budget, you can appreciate, I'm sure, in the process of negotiation, we were trying to work out a reasonable increase for our teachers and, and support professionals relative, relative to the forty-year high inflation rates that we're now looking at. And speaking of that, I'll, I'll refer to the, the food costs. The state of Vermont has some very clear and specific guidelines on what can be charged and recouped per student meal. And every year, they set a maximum possible increase based upon Consumer Price Index data. That maximum this year is six point eight percent, and that's what we have agreed with our food service provider to increase in fiscal twenty-three. And even with that, we have our doubts as to whether that will cover the food service providers' costs. Because if you look again at food inflation, whether it's in the home or away from home in restaurants, we're talking double-digit price increases per the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. And our concern there is, we want to monitor that, because we don't want cost pressures to cause a deterioration in the quality of nutrition that our students receive, which is very important for their active participation in education. Fifty percent increase in heating oil, gasoline, and diesel prices, roughly speaking. The good news here is, several years ago, the district made some investments in alternate energy to be able to burn wood pellets for a portion of our energy needs. Wood pellets have increased significantly in price like most other things, but they are substantially less expensive than heating oil. So we're optimizing our use of wood pellets, and that will be able to provide some offset. But even with that, it's pretty hard to offset a fifty percent increase in, in, in those kinds of costs. And then, of course, medical costs, we were actually pleased that in fiscal twenty-three, it was only a five percent increase, which is the first single-digit increase in the last few years. So I'm sure you're familiar with these kinds of trends, but they make for a very real impact. So in fiscal twenty-three, are the equalized number of pupils that we're anticipating will be down about one percent from fiscal twenty-two, and that's information that's provided to us by the AOE, the Agency of Education, based on information that we give them on surveys. So while the enrollment has been declining a few percent per year, it may stabilize this year, but even if it continues to decline, my message to you is, when you look at price increase effect I've just shown you, even if the student population goes down by one or two percent, the total cost naturally are going to go up. So unless we can take other actions, finds efficiencies in procurement, this sort of thing, I mean, and we're, and we're already beginning that process. Last couple of times I've come, there was an expression of interest by the alderboard to say, hey, could you come and speak with us a little earlier in the process, so that you can provide your input and guidance as, as leaders in the community? And I'll be glad to work with you to suggest a time for that. I have to be careful that I don't get out ahead of the school board reviews naturally. But like I did in January of this year, I reviewed it with the school board on January eleventh, and then I came to visit with you on the eighteenth, shortly thereafter. Maybe in November or December, if there's a time in your calendars that would fit, I like to give the board an overview before people go away for the holidays, so they have a chance to think about it and are not hit by surprise in January when they come back. And that also gives us several weeks for recycle. So if you're so inclined and would like me to come back and give you an overview later in the fall of where we think some of these cards are going to be falling for the coming year and what we're planning to do to try and offset known cost increases, I'll be obviously glad to do that, because we welcome all good ideas in serving the community. So with that, I thank you for listening and ask, are there any questions that you'd like me to address?
Alderman Gillum.
And your formula here with the medical insurance, not the pensions, is workers' comp in that, in that employee number already built in?
Yes, sir. Workers' comp, disability insurance.
That's all in there.
It's all in there, yes, sir. And you know, it's interesting, because the state does provide for a very generous suite of employee benefits. So, you know, even though some of the district employees, you know, as public servant employees, are not paid the same as maybe in the corporate sector, the benefits package actually is quite generous, and that's why total compensation is important.
Alderman Depoy.
Thanks. Ted, thank you so much, I mean, this is like great information. One of the things that struck me as you were speaking, as you began speaking, was the CLA. And the CLA, you said, is now down around eighty-nine percent.
Yeah, eighty-eight and change, right.
At, at eighty percent, we're state mandated to reassess.
That's my understanding.
In this, around the city. I don't know if we're going to get there because of the increasing rates that are being charged, interest rates, I think is going to cool the housing market quite a bit. Now, you were talking about the rate, and when the rate goes up, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, part of that is because you have houses that are selling at a greatly inflated price, but they're still being assessed and still being charged a tax, or tax assessment is at whatever it was set back in two thousand and five.
Yes.
So you might have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house that sells for two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
They're not getting taxed on two fifty, they're getting taxed on one fifty, that's where it drives the rate, and that's where the CLA is going down.
Exactly, because as you're suggesting, Tom, what the state is trying to do is to normalize for taxing capacity across cities and towns, some of which have reappraised more recently, some of which have not. So the state tries to make, you know, a rough adjustment for that. So for example, if you, if you did a reappraisal in, say, twenty twenty-one, your CLA now may be very high, because you're at a hundred percent if you've reappraised, so, or close to it. So yeah, that's, that is how exactly those factors work. I might add one thing, when you mentioned the eighty percent threshold, that can trigger a state mandate for reappraisal. In talking with some of my colleagues who are business managers in other school systems, a couple of whom have hit eighty percent, they said to me, when the call went out to arrange the timing of the reappraisal, their city was told, get on the waiting list, it might be three years before the reappraisers can come, because they're so shorthanded. Now, as you said, that may change, because it seems like with higher interest rates, market dynamics could be changing, but, you know, just because you get triggered doesn't mean it's going to happen immediately.
And follow-up, Mr. President? Um, the, the second part of this was, you mentioned the, the equalized pupils.
Yes, sir.
Um, last I saw, that number had gone below eight hundred in the high school.
In the high school.
In the high school. What is it across K through twelve? Do you have that number this year?
Yes, yes, it is one thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight for the district.
Okay, and it's, the spending per pupil this year is going to be what?
The spending is, is about eighteen and a half thousand dollars per student. The average in the state of Vermont is a little over eighteen thousand. And our equalized pupils went down twenty-one from about nineteen seventy-nine to nineteen fifty-eight, that's the one percent decline year to year that I mentioned. And in the high school, the, the roster of students is about two hundred per grade, which is the eight hundred that you were talking about.
Yeah, and it's, it's my understanding that it's the first time in about seventy years that the state has gone below eight hundred.
I haven't looked at that. The only thing.
Which is showing the demographic shift in the city.
Sure. The only, the only statistic that I've looked at on a trend basis is total enrollment, but it would make, what you say would make sense, because if you go back to like the year two thousand, because I went back for twenty years, and about twenty years ago, the total enrollment was about twenty-nine hundred. And so if you do the trend, it's about two, two and a half percent, some years a little less, some years a little bit more, but that, that's been the trend, you're right.
So twenty-nine to nineteen?
Twenty-nine, yeah, twenty-nine, twenty-nine hundred to about nineteen hundred, right, in the course of about twenty-plus years.
Thank you.
Alderman Gillum.
So are you counting into those numbers the technical school, the kids who are only in the city, right?
The kid, yes, that's exactly right.
But not the sending schools?
Correct, exactly right.
Alderman Diaz.
Ted, if I may, thank you very much. This is very information, good information for us. When you do come back in the fall, when, or whenever that happens, could you, could you discuss the per pupil cost and what, what all entails? What makes that number?
Sure.
That would be really helpful.
I would be glad to. And you know, it's interesting, Sharon, because what we do is, we do look at major categories of expense, which of course, you know, I like to track, but that's how you go about looking for efficiencies, right? So yeah, it's a, a million three that we spend on meals, a million that we spend on transportation, and then, so we can break that down on a per student equivalent and show that to you.
That'd be great, thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Ted, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your support and for, and your interest in inviting me. Bless you.
Okay, we are still in outside the rail. Is there anyone from outside the rail that would like to speak that is not on the agenda? Come on up, please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Stephen White, with the Rutland City Rotary Club. And I, the Rutland City Rotary Club is taken in on the chin. We do a lot of good things in the city, and the last three years, needless to say, COVID has taken its toll on us. We have the ten and nine golf tournament at Procter-Pittsford that we put on every year, it does well for us. Procter-Pittsford's asked us not to have that, we haven't had that the last two years, and they've asked us to kind of stay away with it this year. So we have to look for opportunities to make some money. I walk the gym down, down at the Rutland Gym during the wintertime to take this off, and I'm seeing people playing pickleball. And a guy came up to me and said, do you play pickleball? And I said, no, but I'd like to, because it looked like, like it was a lot of fun. So I did, I started playing. And as I researched more and more of this thing, it's the fastest-growing sport in America, and it's hemorrhaging, I mean, it's just, it's going crazy. Matter of fact, a friend of mine who lives in Florida says you were handed a pickleball paddle when you crossed the state line. So where I'm going with this is, we've, we've established a, build better friendships pickleball tournament, and it's going to be at Vermont Sport and Fitness, and that's going to be where the major people who want to be the grand poobah of build better friendships golf tournament, yeah, pickleball tournament. Then we're going to use the Rutland Rec for the lower people who want to be in a tournament like myself. And we're also going to use Monsignor Connor Park to teach pickleball. And this has become something big, we're getting, lots and lots of people want to learn how to do this. So September tenth and eleventh of this year, we're going to have the, the tournaments that are going on, and it's reaching out. We, I've been in touch with GE, Westminster Cracker, and all the major business people, business organizations in Rutland saying, come on, bring your people to this. We'd love to have them play in the tournament, but we'd also love to see if there's anybody who would like to learn. Why am I here? I need, you know, we need sponsors, but this is obviously not the place, but I need ideas as to how we're going to bring people into the city. We've reached out a lot of different ways, but Dan Dunn just made a good point one day. We have a fantastic city here, and it needs to have the whistle blown on it. And we can bring people to play in a very, very, here's a very good facility up there, where we can have the guys who really are what we call bangers up there. And then we have that rec, college-level rec for our community. And then we have Monsignor Connor Park. We need to be able to bring people to this community, and, and I think we can, I'm asking you, if you can think of anything that we can do to be able to make this thing huge. I want to bring two to three hundred people into this town, and I think we can do it. I think we're well on the way to doing so. If you have any ideas, my name's Steve Voight, my email address is stevevoightvt@gmail.com. And I'm going to leave this, this is our tournament banner here, and I'll leave a couple of these sponsorship papers here, so you'll be able to see what we're thinking in lines of sponsors. We have the hospital, Heritage Family Credit Union, a lot of people are already on board with us, but I'm looking for ideas on how we can make this thing work. And you people are the, you know, you know what's going on here, so anyway. That's my crazy story. That's, I'd love for you to make this pickleball central in, in New England, and I think we can do that. That's, I'd love for you to be able to make this pickleball central in, in New England, and I think we can do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so just to follow up, Steve came and talked to me the other day, and I suggested you go to the Mooreville Hall and speak to people who do it from the air, so the community is aware of, you know, this event that's coming up. I've been told by our rec superintendent that pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the country. Now I believe it, and I think this is a great way to, you know, partner up with a local private enterprise, a, a community service club like yourself, and the city of Rutland to promote, you know, that which is going to be terrific for our community. And we'll bring in, I believe, hundreds of people.
We already, my, my first day, I put it on, it's, it's on pickleballtournaments.com. The first day, I punched the button, go, and we got two call, two people signing up from Bennington. That's how quick this happened. And with Dan's, he's already on top of this, he's had pickleball tournaments before. They reach out really, really quickly. It's a social sport, it's just a darn lot of fun. And his people my age are playing this game. And then there's a, you know, it goes every, do I sound excited about it?
Thank you for coming in, Steve, really appreciate it. Alderman Gillum.
Have you solved the problem with the hotel rooms yet? Or still have an issue with that, not enough rooms?
That's going to be a problem. That's going to be a problem. I'm hoping because it's September tenth and eleven, that I could reach out maybe to Bombazine or something like that because it'll be when the season comes down. But the prices of motel rooms, I orchestrated my fiftieth class reunion a couple of years ago. We were getting motel rooms for sixty-nine, seventy-nine dollars because it was a group organization. That's doubled now, if you can get the room. So, the answer to your question is, I'm going to have to really work on that one, but I know I can do, I'll do it.
So can we reach out to Killington and some others to help here?
No question about it. We want to have the pickle bus. We want, we want to get the pickle barrel to lend us their, their bus, and we'll have it all dressed. No, I got to tell you, I'm sorry I won't keep you here forever, but I go to Myrtle Beach every year. On the way back, I go through the town of Mount Olive, North Carolina. Mount Olive, uh, North Carolina is where Mount Olive pickles are made. And I send it, I take a picture of it, and I send it to my, my grandson because he loves her pickles. On the way back, I said, I wonder if I can get them to sponsor this tournament. So I called them, and I said, can I get ahold of, first thing is, I called them. Hello? And this Mount Olive, and I go, holy crap, people, I just hit the phone. And then I said, could I have, she, I told her a little bit of the story, and she said, I said, can I get ahold of the lady who would be, who is your marketing person? And they, she said, I need the address of her. And she said, oh, hell, I'll get you right to her. And I was turned over to this lady, they just sent me, have to be a hundred and fifty pounds of pickles and stuff like that that are all in these, that we're going to use for prizes on this thing. So, is this going to work? I think so, and please help me with any ideas that you might have.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Steve.
Very much.
Okay, we are still in outside the rail. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from outside the rail this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. Mayor, communications from the mayor, we are up.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. I will try to move things along if I could.
Thank you.
I have actually two appointments to bring forward to the Board of Aldermen tonight. First up, I would like to mention, of course, with the resignation of Devin Neary from the Board of Aldermen, I am excited to submit the name of Matt Reveal for your consideration. And I do have a memo to go along with that, which I can pass out right now. Matt, as you know, is a former member of the Board of Aldermen, serves currently on the Rutland Redevelopment Board, is a local businessman, and has offered his help to fill the vacancy to continue to support our efforts to move Rutland forward. And he'll be able to hit the ground running. So, before I ask you to table that, and Matt's got to take off to a picture.
First off, I want to say I'm honored and humbled that the mayor picked up the phone to call me. This is a good board, you guys have great board members on it. I've worked with a lot of you before, served with a bunch of you on committees. The mayor's correct, I can jump right in. It hasn't been too long since I was on this board. I know the routine, I know we're getting ready to come into budget season as well. There's not a committee that I can't serve on. I was, if I wasn't on the committee, as a lot of the members that have been here a long time know that I went to every committee meeting. So, once again, I am honored and humbled, and I know Devin did a great job on this board, and just hopefully I can fill his shoes. That's it. Thanks, guys.
I'll move to table.
Second.
Second. Motion to table, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And secondly, I have put a memo on your desk earlier tonight. There is a vacancy, now there will be two vacancies on the Rutland Redevelopment Board. I would like to offer the name of A.J. Shaw to you. I want to thank Alderman Whitcomb for sending A.J. my way. Thank you, Matt, appreciate that. A.J. and I spoke late last week. He has a strong interest in economic development and issues along those lines in helping Rutland City. I did provide a resume for you all, and I'm sure that he would be more than happy to speak to any member of the board between now and, and two weeks when you would vote on his nomination. So, having said that, I will ask if you could table the nomination for two weeks.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion to table, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And that's all I have tonight.
Wonderful, thank you very much. All right. Moving on, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Great. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to reports of letters, I'm sorry, reports and letters from department heads and officials. We'll start off with Clerk Heck, the elections update presentation. By the way, while Clerk Heck is getting prepared, he did warn me that outside the rail would take an hour, and it took literally fifty-nine minutes, so it's pretty good odds there. Clerk Heck.
President, it's pretty difficult to follow death, taxes, and pickles, but we're going to do our best to start here. So, in my fourteen years as city clerk, there's, you know, there's been some things that have come about. I've never had to come before the Board of Aldermen to basically ask for your guidance or for your help in regards. But back in October, November this year, Board of Reapportionment up in the Senate started with the reapportionment campaign because of the two thousand and twenty census. It was, it was an issue that didn't end very well for the city, as far as I'm concerned. And now, over the last several weeks, I've been trying to figure out how to, as I'd like to state it, re-educate the voters and what's going to happen. I compliment the Rutland Herald for doing a nice article on Saturday and listing what is a smaller version of this chart here. And when you look at the chart, the first thing that I want you to notice is the color combinations. And what the color combinations represent is every single street that will be impacted by the reapportionment. So, when you look at it, we have eleven thousand six hundred registered voters. When you think about thirty-four hundred, thirty-six hundred, it's not a huge, a huge part of that, it's a third, but it's still a significant third that, that will be disrupted when it comes to voting stats. During the course of the reapportionment, Board of Civil Authority was given an opportunity to basically present their own results or their own districts, as how they would like the reapportionment to work. The BCA, the Board of Civil Authority comprises the justices of the people and the Board of Aldermen. Got the folks together, we really only had about a week, I think it was even less than, to get that information back. So, this was a very rushed process. The census was late. I believe the information for the census was not accurate based upon COVID and what they were able to, you know, gather for information. But at the end of the day, the four House representatives dictated what our wards were going to look like. And in my, again, four years, we have always been accustomed to Ward one, two, three, and four. Godneck Center, Christ of Kings School, Legion, and Calvary Bible Church are pulling locations. Not only did they change the dynamics of where the majority of voters would be, but they renamed Rutland District Four, Rutland District Five, Rutland District Six, and Rutland District Seven. So again, my assistant, Tracy, who's taking my seat tonight to allow me, by the way, it's my wife's birthday, just like to wish her a quick happy birthday as part of that, I'll be home soon. We've worked a lot of, a lot of hours here trying to figure out, how do we re-educate? And that's the one word that we're looking at, is the re-education part of this whole process. It's come to light that, it was stated that the state-run elections, you're going to potentially have a different ward than you would for the local elections. So there's been some banter, discussion in regards to why that is. I've worked extremely close with the Secretary of State. I've asked hundreds of questions about, what do we do? How do we do it? Can we do this? Can we do that? Their statement is, sure, I don't see why not. One thing that we have to realize is that Rutland City specifically has a charter, and then it has a set of ordinances. Those are the first two places that we really need to look when we get involved. So, based upon that criteria, it was, it was asked, or a question was asked, and Gordon asked me the question. Why can't we just use the boundaries of the districts that we have? And I stated, because they're not equal. When, when the reapportionment came through, and the one thing that I really fought, and the mayor fought extremely hard about was, our Ward one is the most heavily voted ward of all four districts. It's not the biggest, it's not the most important, it is what it is. People come out and vote in Ward one. And if you've been here, you've been a Rutland politician, if you win Ward one, you normally win the election. It's an extremely important ward. When people go out, that's where they canvass, that's what they do. It just, it is what it is. So I had a lot of heartburn about why, out of the hundred and twenty-six streets in Ward one, sixty-six of those streets have been changed. So the thirty-three to thirty, thirty-four to thirty-six hundred voters, seventy-five percent are coming from Ward one. Ward one got chopped basically in half, and now spreads up into Rutland town where the House Representative will come out. I hate to think, and I'm not that kind of guy as far as that goes, that this was all done for the sake of red and blue, or whatever color progressive it is, I don't know. It was just funny that there were two gentlemen that were up in that district that were Republicans, and they were the most heavily influenced zones where in Ward four, where we have basically a Democratic candidate, only eleven streets were changed through that process. It is what it is. I don't look at these things. My only concern moving forward is, how do we educate the voters? So where they show up at the polls, where they're going to be put there without having to get back in the car and go simply self. So through that discussion, we talked about letters, we talked about cards, we talked about, you know, how are those things going to go? I talked to the department heads. My friend Mary Markowski said, good luck to you, you send out thirty-four hundred letters, you're going to get thirty-four hundred phone calls. And I said, if that's what happens, that's what happens. And, you know, I appreciate with Gordon, again, the emphasis of all this was, let's start this process sooner than later. I don't want these people to show up at the polls not knowing where they're going to go on that election day. So if we, if the phones are going to ring, and I can be honest with you, they were ringing today. And they were trying to figure out where they were, and a lot of people were trying to ask, why can't you do this? So one of the first things, our charter states is, under one-dash-three wards, the city of Rutland may be divided into wards by ordinances. The Board of Aldermen is empowered to make such changes in the number and boundaries of the several wards of the city as they may deem proper, having regard, so far as practicable and convenient, to an equal division of population among them. That was one of the first things that I learned coming into this. So I was under the impression that our wards need to continually, thirty-six hundred, thirty-six hundred, thirty-six hundred, thirty-six hundred, there's equal representation throughout. Just so happens, at the end, when an apportionment comes before, and the state has the final say, under our ordinances, it defines what Ward one, two, three, and four is, the physical boundaries by street. Kind of knew about those things when they happened back in two thousand and two, or around the time that the census had changed, then these four wards came into play. Used to have six, seven, eight wards, down to, it was at five at one time, and it's been brought down to four. What that means is we have four House representatives. If we had five wards, we would have had five, so on and so forth. Chitting County's now growing at such a rate, I think they're eight, nine, ten, two, three. Yeah, as far as that goes, so they're pretty big. Well, under Title V of our ordinances today, I learned under six-oh-two. Alterations in boundaries of wards. In the event that the state of Vermont should alter the boundaries of all or any of the legislative subdistributes herein above mentioned, such act, such actions shall automatically affect a corresponding alteration in the boundaries of wards herein above established, unless the Board of Aldermen by resolution shall determine otherwise. So quite politically correct. I'm going to remove my thinking cap of how to solve this problem pretty much on my own within my office and come to you folks and say, this is what we got. How would you like to proceed? So, I think my recommendation, after speaking with the administration, and what would be less impactful to all of the voters out there within our wards, and I hate, I physically hate to say this because I don't believe the process was necessary to do what has happened, but it is what it is. So now we have to live with it and move forward. Ten years is, is how this is going to work until the next census comes out. So we might as well get used to it, I might as well get used to it, and do what's going to be best for the voters. I think the best thing would be to allow the boundaries as they sit now to be the boundaries moving forward. So what that means, and the only thing that I have that's giving me heartburn, but you would be my role a, is if something popped up where we were to vote by wards, whether it was other folks, which has been brought forward before to have, you know, the representation in all four wards, or school commissioners, you folks have the ability to come back and change the boundaries. Speak so right here, I just read it to you. But at the moment, right now, if we do this, what this will mean is, when we start this education process and we educate people for the primary, the state will issue a ballot to every single registered voter for November. So, the emphasis there would be, we don't have to worry about it. Have to be honest with you, even during COVID, there's some folks that like to go to the polls and they like to see their poll phone, you know, people that are working. So they're going to take their ballot. Again, the educational piece of that would be, you know, when Fred calls me and he says, I want to go to my polls and see my poll workers. I say, Fred, that's great, do it. Just fill your ballot out ahead of time. When you get to check in, you can tell them that you're, you know, you've already filled out your ballot, and then put it in the box. Because what will happen is if Fred goes to his polling location and he doesn't have his ballot, then he's got to sign an affirmation form stating that he's received it. But it's lost, the dog ate it, he shredded it, he burned it in the fireplace, it doesn't matter. More time, more inconvenience for the voter. So, every time we try and make things more simplistic for the voters, there is always an option or two in regards to what happens there. So, the more we try to make it simple, sometimes the more difficult it actually is going to be. So the recommendation would be to utilize that, even though Ward one, which was at one point, for my fourteen years, the most active ward that we had for voting, will now be possibly number two or number three when it comes to results that will be presented, because they will have a thousand, twelve hundred less voters than any of the other wards out there. So, but I believe that's going to be the best option at this point in time. So, to the voters, the first and foremost is, you will have every opportunity to vote. It could be a little bit of inconvenience at first based upon this, but going to build things like this to be at the polls, going to try and have a portion that is armed that will be at the polls. So when someone walks in and they say, I'm sorry, you're not registered here, what are you talking about? I've been voted here for twenty-two years. Please go see Tom, and Tom's going to explain to which one, and Tom's going to say, based upon what's happened with the, with the boundaries, that you have been moved from Ward one, majority of these folks will be going to Christ of King. So, some folks got shuffled from Christ of King, Merit Legion, and some from the Legion to Calvary Bible. But the Legion and Calvary Bible really, it was, you know, it was tolerable as far as those changes go. But the increase that Christ of King will see, they won't be prepared for that kind of, that kind of input. But we're working on making sure that they're fully staffed and they have the resources. It's a great location. When we talk about Christ of Kings When we talk about Christ the King School, it's not actually the school, it's the gymnasium. So I can't reiterate, educating, educating, educating. I can't talk about this enough to let people know about what is going on and what is happening. But this here, I believe, would truly finalize the apportionment aspect, and what election will look like moving forward, starting on August 9th, and then in November, and then more importantly, what happens to our local election when we come to our March elections.
Alderman Davis.
So if I may, Henry, so are you looking for a motion tonight? You're not from the board. We don't need to take any action to...
Only if you folks are deciding that you don't like my, my advice of keeping the boundaries the same with the state at this, at this present time.
And that, and that keeps, that keeps the voter voting in the same ward for state and local elections.
Correct. Once we get them reeducated, well, those 3,400, 3,600 people, once they find out where their new polling locations are, they will be going to those polls from now until the next census, 10 years down.
I just wanted to make sure that that, that's, we didn't have to affirm your proposal.
That's the intent anyways, Alderman Davis. That's the intent.
Alderman Talbot.
So I think that clarified my question, was that you're proposing that we change the ward boundaries for local elections to align with, with the new boundaries? So do we need a motion to refer to charter and ordinance?
I think we do.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion to refer to charter and ordinance, second by Alderman DePoy. Any further discussion? Alderman DePoy.
So, and I think the reason we need that is because, isn't it in ordinance now? Weren't you saying that?
No, yeah, right now it is, by our ordinance, by, by Title V, Section 602, the state mandates, or our order, our ordinance mandates that we follow the state's guidelines. It's already there. It's only there, it would only need to be referred if you want to make a change to that. If you're okay with following those boundaries, then you have to do nothing, literally, your folks would have to do nothing.
It changes with...
With the state.
It changes automatically with the state lines, boundaries. Okay, so, I, I mean...
I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that.
Okay, we, motion's been withdrawn. Alderman DePoy.
Thanks. I have two questions, one to follow up on that one real quick. So, Henry, I understood you to say that in ordinance it actually describes physically the boundaries, but it also says, or follow the state, or?
So the ordinance would need to be updated for the new guidelines for the state. So that ordinance that now is listed in, in this book, the original book, would in fact not be the true boundaries. So somewhere along the way, I would say yes to making a recommendation to, to charter ordinance to readjust the boundaries per the state guidelines, so we can re-up and put the proper boundaries in there. So that would follow, because like I say, this is going to, this is going to be like this now for 10 years. So we might as well look at getting that changed sooner than later as far as that goes.
Let's all make my motion again.
We have a motion to refer to charter and ordinance, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, awesome. Alderman Gillum.
I've got a vote on it.
Yeah, Alderman Gillum has a comment first. It's okay.
The local election in March, still going to have the same polls? Or how do we deal with Rutland Town issues and Rutland City issues on that split polling area?
Yeah, so, we, we don't really need to think about Rutland Town, Rutland City. When you go to your wards, once that's figured out, you will have a ballot that will, that will present the state representative. So when the folks go to their polling location in Rutland Town, it will say, at least under the Republican primary ballot, it'll say Paul Clifford. It'll say in Rutland District, you know...
Four.
Four, thank you. It will say Paul Clifford, under the Republican. Under, you know, under the guise of, you know, who's in five, who's in six and seven, it doesn't matter, because they're all within the Rutland, Rutland boundaries. But in Rutland Town, I don't know exactly how it'll say, it should say Rutland Four, under the Republican ballot, will be Paul Clifford. He's the only one that is in there. I don't think there's any Democratic or any progressive at this point in time. So it's just, it's not like Rutland Town, people got to come to Godneck Center to vote. They can go to their polling location, the ballot will be determined at who they will get for that.
So how about Town Meeting Day?
So Town Meeting Day, it's just...
We go back to what?
Well, that's, that was my emphasis when I first read the charter, was by equal numbers. So I was thinking we would need to go back to our old wards, because they were equal in participation. But it's going to make it too complicated for the voters to do a state election poll and a local election poll.
Alderman DePoy.
Thank you. So the second part of my question was around the polling places. Where the lines moved, Christ the King is now in whatever number, Mary Howard's ward. Are you still going to keep it for what was Ward 2? Even though it's outside of that boundary?
So under the, under the guidance of the Secretary of State, that question came to me as well, and I asked that exact question, and they told me that it is okay to have two polling locations in a single district, even though one of those polling locations would be for a different district, according to the Secretary of State.
All right, so we have a motion to refer to charter and ordinance, the redrawing of the lines for our polling places. It has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Clerk Heck. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you for working on that. Okay, we are still in reports and letters from department heads and officials. Next up is Barbara Spalding from the RRA, VCDP application, pages one through four in your packet. Barbara.
Or Brennan.
Yeah, Barbara, you got taller.
I thought she was purtier than I am.
This is a poor substitute for Barbara, I will readily admit that. Barbara is here, and she can certainly answer any specific questions, but I thought I would just introduce this. So we have a, a recommendation in your board packet for the city to support a VCDP application with a deadline for the application to be submitted, September 13th. We are looking at working with Hale Resources, who have come to the RRA several months ago to talk about potential funding sources to help them with a gap in their funding for 120 Maple Street, which is a property they actually purchased recently through the city-owned property program. I'm going to let them speak directly on, on the costs and what that will look like. But I will just say, the RRA Board reviewed this. We feel that the Hale Resource Group, which is John and Zach Hale, are a great partner for the city. They've been through this process once before with a rehabilitation project down in Bennington, and did a great job with that. We're actually encouraged by the state funders, the folks up at the Department of Housing and Community Development, to look at this program again, because they were so successful with that project in Bennington. So they, as you know from previous discussions, have, have now set their sights on Rutland, and, and doing redevelopment work on housing in our city, which we desperately need, and are all aware of the, the housing shortage of, of good quality housing that we need to try to redevelop through private sources as well as public. So historically, we have worked almost exclusively with nonprofits for these types of grants. So we worked with the Housing Authority, the Housing Trust, the Rutland County Parent Child Center, most recently. This is a little different. This is a for-profit entity that is looking to tap these resources that the state uses for these types of community development projects. Again, I'd be a little more concerned if they didn't come with these recommendations from the state and have a successful track record to stand on, because it is important for the city to choose wisely when we go after these partners. The grants are to the municipality, so we, we are, you know, basically on the hook for these, and we need to have partners that we can trust and are, have the, you know, sophistication and the ability to not only carry out the projects successfully, but also all of the grant management and administration that comes with this, because it is a fairly complex and, and robust process. It's, it's a reimbursement grant, so all of the invoices that come in due to, based on the work that's being done, need to be vetted and checked and double-checked and come in. So Barbara does a great job at that, as we know, for the RRA and the city, but it's also important to have the sub-grant recipient able to handle that responsibility as well. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Zach, I believe, who's going to speak. And I also will mention that we also have Lyle and Tyler here, our friends from Cedar, who, as you know, have been very involved in, in the housing discussions around the city. And I think Lyle would probably like to speak a little bit at the end, and then certainly happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brennan. Good evening, everyone. I'm Zach Hale from Hale Resources. We're located in Bennington, Vermont, and I'm also here on behalf of Rutland Housing Initiative One LLC, who is the applicant for this grant. First, I'd like to thank for the, thank you for the opportunity for being here tonight. John and I have been actually working with Brennan and Barbara, as well as representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development and Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, to determine the best approach for funding this project since March of 2022. After careful consideration and many hours of research, we've determined that a community development block grant is the best funding option for this project. We come before you tonight to seek the Board of Aldermen's support and partnership to submit this CDBG application to Vermont Community Development Program in September, with a decision to be made in November. To give a little information on the project, 120 Maple Street was a city-owned property that was purchased by us on March 23rd, 2022. The property was condemned by the city in 2015, and it has been vacant since. Our scope of work includes converting the property from a three-unit building to a five-unit, adding two market rate units to the market, and three affordable units that will eventually become market rate. This project has a strong support from Neighbor Works of Western Vermont, who's awarded us $90,000 of V HIP funding. We also have the means of contributing $244,000 in private capital to this project. However, even with our $334,000 in funding we have raised, we still anticipate a gap of about $620,000. This application is an opportunity for the city to bring an additional $620,000 in state funding to Rutland. In addition, it'll bring five rental units online, which have been vacant for seven years now. I would like to mention that, like Brennan did, this is a reimbursement process, and my team and I will be required to spend a lot of money upfront, and then be reimbursed for that through a very fine-tuned requisition process reviewed by the city and the state. Any funds that are approved, but we do not spend on this project, will not be awarded to us, and they'll be awarded to another project at a later date. Some reasons to approve this request, John and I are actually the first and only for-profit business in Vermont state history to ever receive a community development block grant. Our Bennington project was a huge success, and we turned an 11 unit into, or a 10 unit, rather, into an 11 unit. Six of those units are affordable, and five of them are market rate. The project took 18 months, cost $1.65 million, or about $150,000 per unit, and today the building appraises for $670,000. So this $1 million gap in project costs versus the completed product value is a common theme in Vermont redevelopment projects. It's also the reason that the state is seeking to partner with private developers like ourselves due to our low redevelopment costs. The hope is that success stories like the Bennington project, as well as this one here in Rutland, will show people throughout the state that private developers, in addition to nonprofits, are an effective solution to redeveloping Vermont's old housing stock. And our goal is, as private developer, to, to bring other private developers into these types of grants too, and us not be the only ones. So we're trying to lay the groundwork for that. Talking with Patrick Shields, who is the CD specialist from the VCDP, he expressed that this is an extremely competitive cycle for this round of grants. However, Department of Housing and Community Development staff has been eager for my team to come back with another project. They've shown very strong interest in our low per unit cost compared to nonprofits who are renovating properties for about $350,000 per unit, and they've shown some extreme interest, or very strong interest in our extreme quality of work. Our mission is to provide sustainable quality housing to Southern Vermont, and we believe that everyone needs a quality place to live, to achieve their greatest potential. In the same conversation with Patrick, he encouraged us to submit our application, stating few factors that make our application extremely competitive among the other applicants in this cycle. Among those factors were our track record, the known quality of our work, the low per unit cost, and because a mixed-income project in the northwest quadrant of Rutland City is directly aligned with the city's current housing goals. In closing, my team and I hope that the Board of Aldermen can vote tonight and support the mission of our application. This grant process is extremely complicated, timely, and it requires an environmental review before we can do any work to the property. A yes vote tonight will allow us to officially begin this lengthy process and request emergency repairs to replace the roof as soon as possible. I thank you for everyone's time, and I will take, John and I will take any questions that you have. I think maybe after Lyle goes. Okay.
Alderman Franco.
Yeah, so it's great to see you again from our last time in the RRA Board meeting. And I want to thank you for taking the initiative to redevelop here in Rutland. I mean, everyone here knows that we are in desperate need, as has been said already, for more housing here. You know, when I think about the, the block grant that you are considering, I think about opportunities for our city to really go after those dollars with the biggest impact, right? And so I was just kind of thinking about the scale of this grant. It seems in just last year, you know, just looking at some of the developments, you know, you, for a $535,000 award of this grant, it was for a 20-unit project in Bristol, $350,000 for a 14-unit. I mean, this is, you're asking for over $600,000 for, for five units, only netting two, oh, I guess really five, because the three aren't, are vacant now. But I guess I'm trying to understand sort of how you came to that, that scale, and if you've had any insight from the CD specialist you were speaking to around concerns around it only being a five unit for that amount of money?
So I think when it comes to these other organizations that are applying for these grants, they're not just going for a community development block grant, but many different funding sources. And a lot of those other funding sources make the, the affordability of these units perpetual on the property for long-term, and that's something that we've struggled to kind of go with, because it, it really goes on the deed and it's forever. So with us, we, we've applied for V HIP, and we've brought some of our own money to the table. These, the, the board is actually going to like that we've brought, you know, we have another entity that's very interested in this project and has supported this project, but we have not gone, gone to those other types of funding sources. And like I said, there's, the nonprofits are doing this for about 350,000, sometimes more, per unit. So we're looking at about $200,000 per unit for this project, which is significant.
I guess the lack of diversity in the funding means that it's more concentrated in this grant, as opposed to other investment.
Yeah, that's, that is correct, yes.
So, and then if I can ask another question. So I noticed the language in the grant also says that the department might give us this award in the form of a loan. Are you only seeking our support if it's offered as a grant, or are you also seeking our support if it's offered as a loan?
At this point, we'd be looking for a grant. We, we've underwritten the property with private, just money raised from a bank to help support this property as well, and I couldn't see that more interest in principal paid on a loan would, would support this project. We will be restricted with incomes for three of the units for 10, five to 10 years, depending on what the board actually suggests. So you'll, you'll have the final say over that. HUD requires five years, but like what we did in Bennington, they, they raised that to 10 years, so that we had to make them affordable.
Alderman Talbot.
So two questions. One, 950 seems high for five units. I wonder if you can talk a little bit about that. And then the other question I think is for Brennan. If we support this project, does it limit our ability to get other VCDP grants in the future or in a certain timeframe?
Yeah, I think John would probably be the best person to speak to the construction.
So, so with the grants, they, they require an extensive more amount of, firstly, environmental review, there's asbestos removal that's going to need to be done, lead paint abatement, you know, and the quality needs to be not just going through and turning it over in an apartment, it's actually, we're going to gut and renovate this house, put in, do energy efficiency, spray foam in the basement, vapor barriers. So there, there's elements, because of the HUD requirements, that actually escalate the amount that it costs to do these renovations. A private developer that comes through this building, you know, he might not gut it, he might not insulate it, and not do those extra elements, and that would keep the cost down. So, so there, there is some things that are added to this that have... So there is some things that are added to this that have to be accomplished. Okay? That answer your question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So to answer the second question there, so we have the ability as a municipality to apply for one implementation grant and one planning grant per cycle. There are three cycles per year, so we are teed up really with this one for this coming round. There will be a second round with a deadline in February and a VCDP meeting in April. You know, these are supposed to be competitive grants, they're supposed to stand on their own strengths each round. They are statewide opportunities, so as Zach mentioned, we are aware that there are a number of competitive projects coming into this. There's no guarantee we'll even see any funding out of this, but I wouldn't say that this would preclude us going after another grant next round or a round after that. We've been pretty successful, I guess, with seeking out good projects and putting good applications together. I think we can do that with this project and that's where we are right now. Alderman Torey then Alderman Davis. Alderman Davis, you can go first.
I just want to say I have a question. I want to say thank you, I think it's great, I live in the northwest neighborhood and we appreciate the interest that you have. And I was speaking with the Commissioner of DPW and I was saying the work that's being done down there just on the infrastructure of roads and sidewalks and tree plantings, you can see the change in the neighborhoods. You can see that these neighborhoods are stabilizing, that they're starting to be owner-occupied, that these houses are improving. And I think this is another cog in the wheel and I thank you very much for it.
Thank you. Can I just speak to that real quick? So that was one of the things that the funders, when we had our kind of informal and then more formal discussions, noticed as well, is that this is following on the footsteps of the $1.25 million Northwest Neighborhood Revitalization Project. That was public money that was invested into that neighborhood with the hope that we would find private developers that found it attractive enough to come to the city and look to redevelop and invest. So, successful, I think, a lot of work still to be done there, a community that certainly changed its character in the time that I've been here of 10 years and I think more improvements to come. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Torey? Just very quickly to sort of note this, I want to make sure everybody understands I have total support of this project. These are just the type of investments that we're hoping for when we invested all that money and all the work that was done in the past 10 years and had private developers interested in coming and spending their money and investing in the city, which is just what we've been looking for. So public and private money, that's how these projects are going to be done. I have total support.
Alderman Torey?
Thank you. I want to start off by saying that John and Zach Hale are very good people and we should support them in their work in Rutland. I had the chance to listen to you and talk with you both privately. I'm really enthused about the opportunities that you bring to Rutland and the work that you want to do. The reason that I'm voting against this grant is not about the Hales, we should get them more projects to work on. The reason is actually because of the Executive Director of the Redevelopment Authority and the lack of a project here as Alderman Franco was saying. To Alderwoman Davis's point, we invested a million, $1.25 million in the Northwest Neighborhood and worked on 11 houses. It created a park, it tore down some old properties and rebuilt some new ones and gave single-family ownership. That is a transformative project and it was done with a VCDP grant for $1.25 million. Here we come with a $600,000 VCDP request to turn one property on one street into five units. We need housing in Rutland and the best we can come up with is turning an old house on Maple Street into five units? If you have any question about the timing of any of this stuff, when the Hales approached the city for the city-owned properties, for 120 Maple Street, very clearly they put in there they wanted to go for a CDBG grant. Great, that should have been the idea, that should have been the spark that started an actual project. If only there were other buildings around it. Oh, there's plenty on Maple Street. There's a bunch on corner of Maple and Pine, we all know them well. There's a number of opportunities to redevelop properties. 25 Crescent just had a drug raid, what was it, 146 Maple, 76 Baxter just had a murder. We should be looking at the Northwest Neighborhood and looking at houses and figuring a way to get those into hands of people like the Hales so that they can redevelop. Let's do a transformative project, let's put this on the back burner, let's table it for now and let's have the RRA create an actual project that we can be proud of going to VCDP saying, "We are fighting housing, we're creating affordable units and market rate, three to five." It's great, let's do more of it, but this is not the way it happens because the Hales show up at the doorstep and say, "Hey, we did a VCDP grant before, we should do it again." Yes, you should. There are a number of other private developers in this community that would love to get a grant to redevelop properties. Have we put together something for them to ask? Perhaps we should put together a series of properties, go out for an RFP and get developers like the Hales to redo those properties. Any of those things are an actual economic development strategy. This is not, this is throwing spaghetti on a wall because people came to the door. We should vote no or at least table it until a real project can be put together. Again, Hales, I think you're great and I will support you in bigger projects. This is not it and this is not your fault. Thank you.
Alderman Franco?
Mr. President, could I comment on that? We would be more than willing to do a bigger project, but this is a stepping stone to get into this neighborhood and actually do some work, show people that, hey, there's a developer willing to come here. We would love to buy more property there and do this next, the next round with more grants and get more people involved, but it's got to be advertised and there's got to be, it's got to be shown that there's a developer willing to come in and do this kind of thing. So we would be more than willing to do that. Time is of the essence at this point, we have until September 13th, there's a lot of work to do to get this grant and we have to go through public notices, we have to get the approval here, so would love to do that, we would love to do that. But at this point, I think that's this round, we're kind of in a bind here where there's a short period of time.
Okay. Good. Awesome, thank you. Alderman Franco?
Yeah, I mean, I, so a lot of my concerns that Alderman Torey brought up, those were also, you know, things we discussed in the RA meeting because I agree that we need, you know, when I heard that this was the grant we were going after, I was a little confused because I expect more from the RA to put together a series of projects and in looking closer at the language, it's very clear that the VCDP wants any projects that are proposed to align really closely with the municipal's development plan. And so I wanted to ask the RA, you know, what is our plan and how does this align with that because that's the intention of this grant, is to ensure that we are meeting our objectives. So is there a certain project in place, are we, is there an initiative that this would fit under, like how does this fit into the bigger picture? Because I don't want to just keep chasing small things as they come.
Let me answer that, it looks like Lyle maybe wants to add something too. So, I mean, our strategy right now is to try to create and facilitate more development and more market-rate housing, we've been talking.
But I mean, what is that, not broadly, like is there a plan in place?
I probably don't want to argue with you in the public forum here, so I'll just explain it like this, Thomas. We have certainly a plan, it's in the master plan of the city and other elements of that where we are trying to develop housing, like every other community in the state. So that's where we are right now. We have an opportunity here tonight to support, in my mind, a good housing project with some good developers. We certainly have the opportunity to have further discussion about what other projects are out there, I think we will. I think there's other resources out there that we can be studying and trying to tap, but right now, again, today, what we're seeking from this board is the approval for this specific project with the Hale Resource Group and then the ability to open up the environmental review through the State Skiers Program so that they can begin that work. Alderman Gillum?
I too was from that neighborhood and that neighborhood's been struggling for my lifetime. And when we get a project like this to come to the table, damn it people, we need to stand up and go with it. Come on, this is the only way we're going to get that neighborhood turned around, one piece at a time. That's the way we've been doing it, one piece at a time. We got, we got Pine Street cleaned up, we've got Library Avenue cleaned up, little pieces at a time. We got to keep at it and keep going, but to sit there and yell at these people because you want the whole enchilada at one time, it's not going to happen. We got to do it little piece at a time and these two guys, I already went down to their project in Bennington because that's part of my territory, that's a wonderful facility they got going on down there. Well, hello, we should be backing them up. We need to work with the private sector. The private, the public sector and the nonprofit sector can no longer do it alone, we need to do it with the private sector as the third leg of the process here. So I don't understand where you're coming from, where this is a great project and by God, Maple Street has turned the corner, let's just keep going. I don't understand. Explain.
Alderman Torey?
I would love to explain. So I think what I said was that this is a great project as a part of a great project. Things need to, things, things can happen, but great things need to be made to happen, right? There is no leadership in making an economic development project. The reason we're on this is not because we're like, oh, we really want to work on 120 Maple, this is a project we want to work on. What we're here because the Hales have identified a resource in the VCDP money, they've demonstrated they're successful at it and they want to do it somewhere else. That's why we're here, because they are driving the ship. That is not fair to anyone else who is looking to do this kind of work, who doesn't know about VCDP money and it's not fair to the community with an economic development, a lack of a strategy or a lack of a projects moving forward. It's what's coming to us is what we're putting forward. That's the problem. I would support this absolutely as a part of any other number of projects.
So that was something that we had spoken about when we did talk privately and having this be a part of a bigger project. And I had called the CD specialist Patrick about this specific situation to see if, can the city get a grant, a CDBG grant that they administer to multiple grantees, subgrantees? So like us and another developer both get money from the same application? And what he said was that they've never done that before, although it might not be impossible, it would make an extremely complicated application process and administration of the grant much more complicated and it would not only do that, but it would also tie these two projects together and these properties together indefinitely because you'd have to both do an environmental review. And his questioning was, how would that work if one person didn't hold up their end, then, you know, it would make things very, very strange and complicated. So what their normal policy is and their proceed, or not policy but procedures is how he put it, was that they have, there can be one implementation grant per cycle and what would happen is that us and another developer would both provide a project to the RRA or to the Board of Aldermen, it would be up to the Board of Aldermen to look at both of those projects and then vote on which one they wanted because the city can only have one application. So normally, there's a competitive process where it's decided by a vote of a board such as yourself.
Alderman Gillum and then Alderman Torey.
No, I'll yield.
Okay, Alderman Torey.
Just one more comment, absolutely, 100% agree with you and perhaps the thing to do would be to have five of these lined up so they're all individual, but we're doing a whole bunch with a whole bunch of different people. There are other ways of skinning a cat, we need to sit down and try and that's not what's happening here. Again, this is not about you guys, I want to support you as developers in Rutland.
Alderwoman Davis?
So I don't want to answer to this, it's just a statement. I guess I think we as individual board members have to think about, is this a good project for the city? Is this a good project for the Northwest Neighborhood or are we going to get caught up in a pissing contents of personalities?
Alderman Tario and then Alderman Franco.
I just have a question, does, do we have time to get together on the other grants before September 13th or if we don't apply for this one, there's nothing else in the works and we're going to lose out on this grant?
So, so as we mentioned previously, we started this discussion months ago. We have other conversations probably going to blossom here, but right now, no, I think we really need the vote tonight that's going to allow this to move forward. This is actually not even the final vote, we will be back, Barbara provided in the board packet there the timeline, so we have to do public notices, we'll be coming back in August for a formal resolution, but what this would do is allow, a vote tonight would do is allow them to begin that environmental review that's going to be able to be done in parallel, but there's a lot of detail and a lot of work that will go into that as well as expense that's being paid upfront here by our partners. All right, and I think we had Alderman Franco next and then, did you want to speak first?
Yeah, just a really quick comment, I mean, I don't think any of us are questioning, is this a good project? We're questioning, is this the best that our city can do in terms of applying for a really competitive grant that then may put us at a disadvantage moving forward in future cycles because they've already spent some resources in Rutland and maybe, you know, another town is on the books and they need to invest there. So I think that's what we're questioning, it's not even anything related to the Hales, it's a question about our strategy of redevelopment here in Rutland. And I just wanted to clarify that because there's nothing against you all, this is an amazing project, want to see it happen 100%. We have $400,000, I think, going toward a housing redevelopment pilot project that we just invested with our ARPA funds, regardless of if you get this or not, would love to see you, you know, apply there for other developments and whatnot. It's obviously a priority for us, I think it's not, is this a good project, is this the best that we can do because we want to put our best foot forward? And so just wanted to clarify that for everyone.
Thank you. Alderman DePoe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just, you know, I've been listening to a lot of this because I'm trying to figure out, I understand where Alderman Torey is coming from, but not where he's directing his anger at. I get it that there are a lot of community, areas of our community that need to be upgraded, but when you think about this, Alderman Gillum is absolutely right in one respect, it has to be almost one at a time because we don't have the labor out there, we don't have the contractors out there, they're going to be able to do the kind of work that you know we need to have done in the city. I mean, go have, try to have your bathroom redesigned, it's going to take you till a week from next and ever and that's if you find somebody that says he won't do it ever, okay? It's a problem that we don't have enough capacity out there to build what you know we need. And, you know, I think that doing it at least the way that's being presented here is a start and until we can get more people into that labor force, into that workforce that can do that kind of work, you're going to look at one or two at a time anyway, period. Even if we had the funding, even if we had the plan for 100 units or more, it's just not going to happen that fast. Look at Library Avenue, there was a house, I don't know what the number is, but most of the way down Library before you get to Baxter on the left-hand side, it was completely rehabbed, it was done by one individual, I happened to graduate high school with him, I had the opportunity to go in and see this house long ago when I was a pizza driver and delivering a pizza in at 20 years old and the place, when I saw it, you know, it was a couple of years ago now when this contractor finished with it, it was amazing. I mean, it just, lights and, you know, everything sparkling in this house. The person that bought the house and took the house over is absolutely loving the house, he's taking care of it and it's the kind of investment in that section of town that's desperately needed. And you know what, I don't care if it's just one at a time and the cost, to me, it boggles my mind that we're talking these numbers, but that's what they go for these days and that's what we have to do in the city and even if it's one, it's like, you know, you talk about one life saved, this is one house saved, it could otherwise end up like some of the other houses in town which have been razed and we don't need that. We need more housing and this is providing at least five units, so I'm in favor of this.
Alderwoman Savage?
I have a question that maybe you can answer. So if a grant is issued to a city, these types of grant, does that mean there's another, a longer period before they will win the grant again or is it, if we are successful with this project and bring another wonderful project in one of the next couple of rounds coming up, could we also, you know, be successful again?
Yeah, I think Zach mentioned, you know, they've had success, they are, again, one of the only private companies that's ever accessed these funds and done successful projects. So I think it's quite possible that this, you know, opens the gates for others to come in after this. It certainly would seem to me that a successful project builds on others, you know, other successful projects will build on this as well. So again, we thoroughly have vetted this, both Barbara and I who have a number of years of experience working in this field as well as obviously the funders and everybody's pretty enthusiastic that this is a good project, that this is the right project for this round and again, we're hopeful that we'll get an affirmative vote and can start moving forward with it. with it.
Alderman Gillum.
Thank you. I need to apologize to my friend over there, because you and I actually agree a lot on housing in this town. So you and I are actually allies in a lot of projects. But we really, we really need to get this off the ground. These guys are doing something so unique and paving something that we've never done before here in the city. This could be an opportunity for other projects coming down the pike. So if we can get this through and be very successful like Bennington has, this opens up the floodgate for other private sector folks to come in, because they got some security. Now they have an idea. Someone has brought us to first base. They say, oh, wow, this is working pretty good. We can bring others in. This is a strategy. This is a strategy to get the other projects off the ground. So I really think you folks need to support this. And I, you know, I really do take it very personally, because we've worked so hard. I asked Sharon, we worked so hard trying to get that neighborhood to come around, and it's finally coming around. We're not there yet, but it is coming around.
I'd like to get, Lyle, if you'd like to speak.
I've been changing my notes over here. And you know exactly what I'm going to say, anyway. I'm hearing two different conversations going on tonight. And please don't confuse the project with the other conversation, which I think is process and how do you get the word out and how do you get more projects in? That's for the RRA to work on and to go and decide that, yes, they're doing this, they'll advertise, do whatever they need to do to get more projects in. This project's going to take some time, and they've already put a lot of time into it, and time is of the essence. So, and I love, we've got a couple of baseball players on the end here, because they're talking about singles, and we need to hit singles every single time that we can. And here's an opportunity to hit what I think is a double. You're, some people would say there were three units on the market. There weren't three units on the market. There hasn't been anybody there since 2015. So we're going to bring, they're going to bring five units back online. So I think that's a real positive. It's very difficult to build and renovate right now. Very difficult to build and renovate. You're going to see that the property taxes go up on that property. They're going to be paying property taxes that are higher right now than then maybe aren't being paid at all right at the moment. Maybe you paid off the taxes. So you're going to see more revenue coming into the city. Someone mentioned that this is on the municipal plan. If you look at your 2020 municipal plan, it says, take advantage of state funds. So we need more singles while we're waiting for a home run, which I hope will be in College of St. Joe someday. We'll come back and talk about that after the study's done. So I want to commend the Hales, because this is totally in their wheelhouse. This type of construction renovation, totally in their wheelhouse. When I grow up, I want to be half as smart as this guy. Sorry, John. Half as smart as this guy. He does all the research. Castleton University graduate, proud of it, and has done business plans and knows how to do this stuff. They do quality work. They've got experience. And it's a reimbursement grant. I hope you've heard that over and over again. So if they don't spend the money, they don't get the money. So it's not like you're going to give them 600 and whatever thousand dollars. It's what the project will cost. If my father was standing up here, he would say, 620,000 dollars? You've got to be kidding me. Where's that coming from? Well, yeah, it's taxpayer dollars someplace. But we're not saving ourselves if we don't take it, because somebody else is going to get it. So here's our opportunity to get it right now. So I'm encouraging my friend, Mr. Torey, to please vote in favor of this. He's shaking his head. Still love you. But when I went out and went to Home Depot and had to buy half a sheet of plywood for $36, I realized why the cost for all this, and you're, and Michael's smiling, because he's renovating his house. He knows this is all true. So I would ask that you vote in favor of the project. The time is now. Let's hit some singles. Let somebody get in line for February. It could be a bigger project. I hope it's a bigger project with 20 different units, because we need every single one of them. And Mary, we didn't come here tonight to ask for money. We came here for you to accept it. So please get the money. So thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. Brendan, can we get a motion? We probably should have had that earlier, but if you could.
We need to suspend the rules.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Second.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So it's pretty straightforward. I think we're just asking for the affirmation of the board to support the VCD application from Hale Resources as presented in the board packet. Obviously, that's just a draft that will be fleshed out extensively, but to support the project and also to allow Barbara to open up the Gears program that the city controls to allow them to begin their environmental review process.
This is for 120 Maple.
120 Maples. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussions?
So I know that you mentioned the public notice, and I know the grant stipulates you have to have like a public hearing to get feedback. So are we approving the grant regardless of the outcome of that feedback? Or are we approving going after that?
No, this again is fairly informal. What we're just, what we're looking for is the city Board of Aldermen's support for going into this project process, and there will be.
So the support to hold the public hearing that's required? Is that?
Ask me that question.
So the support to do things like hold the public hearing that's required for the grant?
Yes. Well, Barbara's shaking her head back there. Barbara, do you want to?
So we're just asking the Aldermen's support so that we can start the application process and we can open the environmental review online so that can get started. Then we will come back to you in August and ask you to set an required public hearing, which will take comment from the public, and hopefully we'll have more vetting application going forward. But this is the meeting where you will support applying.
So regardless of the outcomes of the August public hearing, we're going to, okay.
Awesome. Seeing, hearing, no further discussion.
Roll call, because while I agree with Lyle, this is our own lever to register the volume of the RRA.
Do you want to call one?
Yeah, sorry. Chrissy Torrey?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
Anna? Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jaren?
Yes.
And I'm sorry if I was supposed to say Alderman before that.
That's all right. The eyes have it. Thank you very much. And you're still up, so.
I'm still up.
Next subject, thanks for coming in, by the way, guys.
Thank you, everybody, for your support. First I understand, if we hope to come around and do it again, bigger. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you. Back again. So the second, second piece we had on the agenda today, as you know, we have received our V-Trans application, or our, sorry, our V-Trans Grant Award. We've gotten our contract back. And the next step for the city is to hire a municipal project manager to basically oversee the next steps of the design build. So we have a couple of different options based on the V-Trans requirements. We can go out to bid. We can choose from a selected group, or we could hire either the regional, Rutland Regional Planning Commission staff to oversee the project as the MPM or a municipal employee. So the RRA is recommending that we actually hire the Regional Planning Commission employee. And I believe Stephanie Bork is the, is the staff that would be in charge of this. As you saw from the second piece there, the attachment, there's quite a bit here as far as the technical abilities to manage these. So we feel that the Regional Planning Commission has that capacity. We would be asking tonight for maybe authorization for the mayor to sign a actual letter of appointment and support, which has to appear on city letterhead. But it would be very similar to the first paragraph or two in the, in the attachment there, I think, just a straightforward recommendation.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a letter appointing Stephanie Bork, planner for the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, for the Transportation Alternatives Grant.
Second.
Yep, that's great.
Motion has been seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Brendan.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You, too. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Commissioner Rotundo, request design engineering approval for the Meadow Street Stormwater Separation and Connor Park Combined Sewer Storage Projects, pages eight and nine in your packet. Laura Jors.
Thank you. So the board authorized the RFQ for these two projects back on February 22nd of this year. We received five proposals, which were evaluated. If you look in your packet, you can take a look at page nine, and that was our evaluation of the five consultants. The selection committee subsequently shortlisted the consultants down to, down to three, and we interviewed those three. And the results are Wright Pierce as number one, Aldrich and Elliott was number two, and Weston and Sampson was number three. And just as a reminder, these two projects, the first is the Meadow Street Stormwater Separation Project. And that was approved by voters as part of the 2019 wastewater CSO bond. And for that project, V-Trans awarded the city an $814,000 construction grant. The Connor Park Combined Sewer Storage Project is one of the projects identified in the approved long-term control plan. So those are the two projects. And because of their close proximity, we wanted one consultant to design both projects. That's why we made this RFQ. So anyway, with the board's approval, if you give us the approval tonight, we'll begin contract negotiations with Wright Pierce. And if those negotiations don't lead to an acceptable contract, then we'll move on to Aldrich and Elliott. That's the way we'll work this. And then, of course, if we can't with Aldrich and Elliott, then we would move to Weston and Sampson. So in my packet, I do have a motion, if you'd like to use it for approval.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to approve the selection of the engineering consulting firms for the wastewater, stormwater engineering services as recommended in the attached table and as summarized below. Wright Pierce, number one. Aldrich and Elliott, second. Weston and Sampson, Sampson, third.
Second.
We have a motion, which I will not repeat, and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting patiently. Treasurer Markowski. We have two items. We'll start with treasurer's report for June 30th, and that should be in your email.
Yeah, thank you. I did, I did have the opportunity to get a lot of adjustments done, year-end adjustments. So I wanted to just get this up. This is a preliminary report on, for June year-end. I really focused my attention on the general fund, so I will likely submit another preliminary pre-audit report for June 30. But really wanted to focus on general fund, given that we'll be setting the tax rate tomorrow. So given the late hour, I would refer this to committee. It's a quarterly report. I'm not going to get into detail, but did want to get it out to you, so you could look at it and see where individual departments landed for the end of the fiscal year when we're setting the.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All those, any discussion? Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mary. And on to your next item, fund balance change request as of June 30th.
Yes, and I, I may not even, I had so many things together for tax rate. So on that request, I have two requests just going into the tax rate setting tomorrow. One would be to, last year, when we set the tax rate, we set aside $837,607.20. We set that aside to support the FY '22 tax rate. So what, I would ask for the board to, I would, to make a motion to remove that assignment, making those funds available for FY '23 when we're setting that tax rate, so.
Move to suspend the rules.
We have a motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to remove the assignment fund in the amount of $837,607.20.
We have a motion to remove the funds, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And that was the first one. Now, the second one is a little bit different. We usually, we usually aren't in an environment where you're buying something, you have to wait six months to receive it. So in these three cases, the fire department turnout gear, police department firearms and uniforms planned for in the FY '22 budget, but they're not, we're not going to get them till FY '23. So what, they will be expensed in '23. What I'm asking is to assign those funds, because they belong in '22. I worked with our auditor, what's the best way to do this on these? So that's what I would be looking for from the board, is to assign those funds FY '22 to be available to cover the turnout gear, firearms, and uniforms in the amount of $92,647.
Alderman DePoy.
So I'd like to suspend the rules first, take the issue.
Second.
Right, motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Go ahead.
So.
Make a motion first.
Okay. So my motion would be to make available the funds from FY '22 to be used in FY '22 in the amount of $92,000. So so moved on that.
Second.
Your motion's been seconded. Any discussion?
And I have a question.
Yes.
So Mary, you obviously have to put the money aside into an account. Is there any state law or did the accounting, or the auditor say that it has to be in an account that doesn't bear interest?
Nope.
Can we invest it?
It's not going to go into a separate account. It's going to be on the balance sheet. It's an assignment. It's, we're going to assign those funds and say, that's what those, we're holding those for. So when we're looking tomorrow at the unassigned fund balance, we're going to have $96,000 of that already set aside, not available to go into FY '23, because it's for FY '22 expenditures.
So it'll just stay in FY '23?
It'll just stay there, and as we pay those invoices, when those things come in, then we'll release that assignment as we go through FY '23.
Got you. Thank you.
Any more questions? Comments? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Anything else, Mary?
That's it.
Thank you, Treasurer Markowski. Appreciate it. Do that. Okay, moving on. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Anything else, Mary?
That's it.
Thank you, Treasurer Markowski. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, zoning administrator Sternisti, short-term rental solutions software contract, pages 10 through 19 in your packet.
Good evening, everyone. So if you remember during the previous budget season, I had proposed as part of the building and zoning budget to get some software to help assist us in administering short-term rentals throughout the city. That program is called GOV OS. So fiscal year turned over, I've been working with Matt coordinating with GOV OS, and we have a contract hopefully in place. I know Matt has asked for some revisions which they have made. So that's where we stand, and are there any questions?
So I just, what is being asked of us to improve the contract?
So I guess, Matt, is it to approve the con, or enter into a contract with GOV OS?
Yeah, I'm just drafting quickly. I think it's our standard motion to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with GOV OS for, is it short-term rental, the software?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so if someone wants to move that.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with, or to authorize zoning administrator Sternisti to enter into an agreement, or the city of Rutland to enter in an agreement with GOV OS.
We have a motion to authorize entering into an agreement with GOV OS. Has been seconded. All those in fav, or any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. If there are no objections, I'd like to move petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications up. Hearing and seeing none. SCP request for downtown partnership Friday Night Live events, pages 20 through 24 in your packet. Tiffany, if you'd like to give us a rundown. I didn't want to make you wait much longer.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your patience. I'll keep it pretty brief. I'm pretty sure most of you are familiar with Friday Night Live. They are incredible events that we host on Center Street. They stimulate economic activity in our region as well as provide some fun activities for folks and families. They're really great events. We have live music. We have local vendors participating, food trucks. So again, it's a nice occasion for people to get together, especially after COVID, people are really looking for these opportunities. We have three dates this year, July 22nd, August 5th, August 19th. We have been in contact with the Rutland Fire Department, DPW. RPD does provide security for these events, and they've already been made aware of it, and they will be there. We've also provided the city clerk with a list of our food vendors that we will have on premises. And then we've also supplied them with our proof of insurance as well. And like I said, this event takes place downtown. We do ask DPW to close down Center Street from Merchants Road up to Whale Street, so pretty small footprint. We do close eastbound traffic around 10 o'clock. We close westbound traffic around 3:00. We found that this really works for downtown businesses so they can still stay open for most of the day. But again, it's a great opportunity to get folks out, helps our small businesses, and it's a great time to see some music, so I definitely recommend coming. So we are here to, yeah.
Alderman Davis.
Get geared for the events.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Can I do all these as one? Motion to approve the special event permit request for Friday Night Live 2022 for July 22nd, August 5th, and August 19th from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yep, we have a motion that's been seconded. Alderman Davis.
There's missing a signature from the city attorney, so if we could amend that.
Pending.
Pending the signature.
Pending the signature. Attorney Blumer.
You got your pen signed right now?
It's right there. So, thank you, Alderman Davis.
Actually, if you want.
Is there any?
Either way, I can sign, I hadn't seen the insurance. I just got back from vacation, so I haven't seen the insurance until just now. So I can sign it before your motion or after, I guess it doesn't matter.
So assign, pre-motion. Alderman DePoy.
You know, the Def Leppard Motley Crue concert is on August 5th on at Fenway, so that might, that weekend might be a problem.
So what you're saying is we're going to go hard on our marketing.
We'll try to get them to play up here.
Okay, but we have restoration barbecue, so.
Oh, nice.
All right. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, we hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. Returning to our regularly scheduled program, reports of standing committees. Alderman Savage, Charter and Ordinance.
Rutland City Charter and Ordinance meeting met July 2nd or July 7th. Members present were Chair Alderman Savage, Vice Chair Alderman Gillum, Alderman Tad, uh, Tadio, sorry. Alderman Torrey and Alderman Franco. Others present were Mayor Lair, Attorney Blumer, Alderman Davis, Alderman Talbot, Chief Kukalan, Gordon D'Jillo, and 15 members of the public. Chair called the meeting to order at 5:30 PM. The item on the agenda, the item on the agenda was a discussion of the city's noise ordinance as referred to committee from the full board after Harrington Avenue resident asked for help with loud music played at all hours by neighbor. Subsequently, an article in the Rutland Herald on residents' complaints about loud vehicles was added to the evening's discussion. The meeting began with a resident from the corner of Bellevue and Temple explaining that noise from cars using Temple as an alternative to Main Street and outfitted with an added-on noise, or an added-on feature of crackle pop are a significant disturbance in the neighborhood. The sentiment was reflected by many other members of the public, one of whom said crackle pops woke him often early in the morning, and that this is excessive beyond the normal city noise. He cited excessive speed as part of the issue. Concern for loud popping sound, concern for the loud popping sounds effect on veterans and sleeping children was noted. Also speaking to the subject were several owners of muscle cars and area car enthusiasts who worried that their vehicles and the activities at the local car clubs would be affected by an overreaching noise ordinance. Several stated that the crackle pop disturbance was limited to a couple of people who are without regard for the annoyance caused by their actions and enjoyed being disrespectful with their loud cars. The subject of unreasonable neighbor noise was also addressed. The Harrington Avenue residents stated that the city's current vague ordinance can't be enforced. Several residents spoke about neighbor noise becoming unbearable at all hours and not being able to have grandchildren in the backyard due to loud cursing and disruptive behaviors. Chief Kukalan weighed in after members of the public finished speaking. He stated that the police are experiencing an unwieldy noise ordinance that is difficult to enforce, especially for residences. There's an ordinance which covers peddlers, solicitors, public nuisances, and ones that could be used for unnecessary car noise, but nothing specific for residences. Alderman Davis asked the city attorney if disturbing the peace can be enforced. Chief Kukalan answered that the problem is when they have calls from one person, it is not classified as a disturbance to the public. Alderman Davis suggested that the definition of public might be examined. Alderman Davis stated that it can't only be two cars with a crackle pop making all the noise, and that the hours that the noise is happening should be a factor for enforcement. Chief Kukalan explained that ordinance 4945 covering unnecessary noise can be used for cars abusing crackle pop. The chief noted that they can investigate particular cars. Members of the public again stated their concern that without, that, without the after, factory add-ons, crackle pops, their cars could be targeted by a new ordinance. Alderman Savage asked a member of the public if car owners could choose not to use the crackle pop feature in the city, and the response was yes. Alderman Talbot suggested that the car enthusiasts, to the car enthusiasts, that a new ordinance may not be enforced against all louder cars, and Alderman Gillum stated that cars at events would not be targeted. Alderman Franco asked if the police had stopped any crackle pop cars. The chief said yes, and a written, and written warning was issued. Attorney Blumer warned that the penalty under 4945 is a misdemeanor and asked if we needed a different penalty. He further stated the state's attorney may not prosecute this type of misdemeanor. Alderman Blumer, our attorney Blumer, sorry, stated that he would like the ordinance to be less vague, and it needs to be updated and defined. Alderman Tadio stated that a criminal penalty is too harsh and that no one should get a criminal record for issues related to noise. Alderman Torrey said there is work to be done to clean up the noise ordinances. And Alderman Franco asked Attorney Blumer for consensus of example ordinances ahead of the next meeting. No action was needed as the noise ordinance issue will remain in committee while Attorney Blumer gathers examples from other municipalities to share via email with the members before the next meeting, where members will begin to examine possible remedies to the issue. Meeting adjourned at 6:49 PM.
Thank you, Alderman Savage. Alderman Whitcomb, Finance Committee.
All right. Finance Committee met on July 12th. The topic was a Farmers Food Center loan request. Members present were Alderman Davis, Alderman Torrey, Alderman Talbot, and myself. Others present were Mayor Lair, President Dungeons, Alderman Gillum, Treasurer Markowski, Gordon D'Jillo, Heidi Lynch, and Elizabeth Colas. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The meeting opened with Elizabeth specifying the request was being made from the Farmers Food Center, which is a property owner, not the Farmers Food Market. Elizabeth spoke to the history of the Farmers Food Center, specifically studying the discovery of contaminants at the site which created the need to raise funding for remediation. Elizabeth provided an overview of the corrective action plan to address identified contaminants, and noted to the committee that the goal was to have the farmers market back within the food center by November 1st. Elizabeth explained that the length of the loan request would be for five years with the hope that it could be paid back sooner than that. Mayor Lair inquired why a traditional financial institution was not considered for the loan rather than coming to the city. Elizabeth explained that in order to obtain the loan, certain prerequisites would need to, would need to have been met, which were difficult given their current position. The mayor expressed his concern with the loan request and the uncertainty of the plan to pay back the loan. Alderman Davis expressed she was not comfortable with the city acting as a bank. Treasurer Markowski explained that there are certain mechanisms in place to offer loans to businesses within the municipality, but that this request was unique in nature and would be precedent-setting. Alderman Gillum suggested that the Farmers Food Center approached the SBA for a loan. The committee took no action, and the issue has, and the issue has opted to leave in the matter opening the Finance Committee. Meeting adjourned at 6:05 PM.
Thank you, Alderman Whitcomb. Moving on to reports of select committees, Alderman Franco, IT Committee.
Rutland City Information Technology Committee met today, July 18th, at 5:30 PM in the downstairs conference room. Members present included Alderman Franco, Alderman Talbot, Treasurer Markowski, Administrator Sternisti. Others present included Mayor Lair and President Dungeons. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss four proposals that were submitted in response to the city's RFP for an IT-managed services provider. Four bids from Dominion Tech Computer Services, Tech Group, National IT Services, and Soft Sage Technologies were discussed. Alderman Dungeons noted that Dominion and National IT Services did not provide a bottom line. These figures, however, were then provided by Administrator Sternisti for committee review. Treasurer Markowski flagged that some estimates included the police department. However, previous conversations suggested the RCPD would not be part of the city's IT services rollout and would instead maintain their existing services with Dominion. The committee went on to discuss the importance of vendor proximity, and a consensus was reached to exclude Soft Sages, which is based in Pennsylvania. Alderman Franco also noted that this group did not perform an onsite assessment or visit as other vendors had done. And Administrator Sternisti also pointed to the importance of government experience, which Soft Sages did not demonstrate in their bid. In moving forward with the discussion of the remaining bids, Alderman Franco highlighted the striking urgency of the city's needs as shown in National IT's assessment and findings. This included out-of-date servers, a lack of adequate backup system management, and near-end infrastructure, which Administrator Sternisti agreed poses a serious risk to the city. The committee reviewed the bid submitted by Dominion Technologies, which currently services the police department, but determined that it was not as comprehensive or as thorough as the bid submitted by other vendors. The committee then decided to instead prioritize Tech Group and National IT Services for consideration. Mayor Lair suggested considering a department-by-department approach for funding, which Treasurer Markowski noted she would attempt. The committee considered how ARPA funding might also play a role in covering some of the upfront costs associated with IT managed services, while the traditional city budget process could be used for future years. Treasurer Markowski recognized the high cost of such services, but noted the hidden costs of inefficiencies that might face City Hall without a dedicated IT provider. Alderman Dungeons pointed to National's five-year implementation plan, but suggested that their proposal did not fully reflect the needs of the city as it included onsite active directory servers instead of cloud-based server options, which the city currently uses. The committee agreed and looked to Tech Group as the vendor most aligned with the services being sought. Several tiers of service were offered by Tech Group and were considered. This included their complete care package, which was the premium option, remote care, which was the next tier down, and then essential care. A few follow-on options were available, such as backup services and security. While the complete care package included onsite support, the committee decided to begin with the remote care option, which is more affordable, at about $100,000, which is the rough estimate. And that includes onboarding, the initial fees. Tech Group also allows the city to adjust its plan as needed to the other tiers. Alderman Dungeons agreed that Tech Group is the preferred option, but noted that it did not specifically list Google support in its bid, which is important given the city's current use of Google. Alderman Talbot made the following motion, which passed unanimously, to recommend to the Board of Aldermen to award an IT-managed services provider contract to Tech Group for the remote care package, pending clarification regarding Google Workspace Support and ISO Move.
Second. We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion, questions, or comments? Alderman Torrey?
Just quickly, sorry I wasn't able to make it. The amount of money that we're authorizing that has been budgeted in the next year, is this is under that amount, or that hasn't been budgeted?
It hasn't, so the thought, and maybe I'd like to speak to that, Mr. Mayor, but the thought was to look at how we might cover some of the initial costs potentially with ARPA. So what I was about to say is we want to send this to finance next if, once we, if we so choose to move forward with Tech Group, and then configure out final numbers through contract negotiation. But I'll let you speak to.
I mean, there would be a cost savings when you compare it to what we're using now, but you are, the thought around there was to use ARPA funds for the initial rollout for the hardware. And then this fall, when we're, you know, discussing the '23 budget to figure that out. But I think it is something that we made probably for a long time.
That was kind of my question. So the $100,000 is to get it us up and running, but we're, are we unsure? Or do we have a budgetary cost yearly for IT?
Yeah, so there will be a yearly cost. So this would cover us, my understanding is the first year, including the getting us on our feet part, doing the assessment, onboarding, all of that. So this would cover us that first year, but to the mayor's point, we would then need to budget moving forward.
Right. But do we have that dollar amount for what, that yearly cost will be to the budget?
I think it's, do you remember what it was without the initial?
Yeah, so without the police department, I believe it was $67,000, which includes the rec. department, the fire department, and City Hall. And, yeah.
And do we know, if I may, if we don't, Andrew, what are we paying for services now? Kind of, sort of?
If Mary was here, I would.
Yeah, it's been on an as-needed basis.
Okay, so it's just, it's a pay-as-you-go?
Pay-as-you-go.
Yeah, I would call the file.
Okay, thank you.
You know, it's definitely what has gotten us to this point, but I think, you know, the urgency is here now, you know.
I don't disagree, yeah.
Hundred percent, yeah.
So I'll just say, any, any further discussion? Alderman Gillum.
What I'm hearing is this is going to be spread among all the departments, this, this cost? So everybody's got a piece of it? So it's not one, okay?
It waters two or two.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, hearing no, or seeing no further discussion. Any more discussion? Okay, great. Hearing and seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Please continue.
Alderman Dungeons suggested that moving forward, an assessment be performed to provide final cost figures to be negotiated. Following that final quote, the IT committee will make a referral to the Finance Committee to consider the ARPA funding for initial costs, and the meeting adjourned at 6:19 PM.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, reports of representatives, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have none. And finished business. Are there any unfinished business to, before the board? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We'll move on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman DePoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I made a purchase on, you know, mail order. I have a cleaning business, as many of you know, and I needed some parts for my vacuum. So I called this company, and they started telling me what each of the charges were. Okay, your, your, your part is $17.95, and the shipping is $5.95, and state taxes, you know, whatever that was on that. And then they said local tax is 1%, and that comes to 25 cents. And I said, wait a second. I said, we don't have a local tax here in Rutland City, Vermont. And they said, well, our program shows that you do. And I said, well, what is the program, where's that come from? And the lady said, well, it says 05701, that's your mailing address, right? And I said, yes, that's my zip code. And she said, well, it says here that you get a 1% tax. I said, well, I, I, I know that we do not, because I'm on the city council, the Board of Aldermen, and there's no tax in the city of Rutland. I said, now, a corresponding town, municipality that's actually right next door, you know, surrounds us, Rutland Town, does have a 1% sales tax. And I understand that that's where you're getting that from, but you're technically illegally charging me. I said, 25 cents doesn't matter. I said, 25 cents doesn't matter, I, it, and I started thinking, my gosh, if, if I'm paying 25 cents just for this, and I've made many other orders, so I started looking back at my other invoices, or my other, you know, statements, and sure enough, there's, there's a municipal sales tax on all of those going back for almost a year of the parts and service that I've had to do for these vacuums. So I'm like, I start kind of adding that up, and it came to, you know, tens of dollars. Okay, fine.
Moral of the story.
That's a foot-long hot dog.
If I give you $10, can go home.
So, this is one company, and I mail order from Amazon and others, okay, lots of, and other stuff, not, WB Mason, we get stuff from them for cleaning supplies, we get other stuff, and all of those companies, if they are, and I, I don't know about these others, but, because I didn't go and check those, I only checked the one, are charging sales tax to Tom DePoy. Well, if everyone here and the rest of the city taxpayers are buying stuff either over the internet, or mail order, or whatever, and they're getting charged based on their zip code, well, Rutland City's all paying 1% tax now, so is Rutland Town, obviously, so is Mendon, Mendon's 05701, okay? So now you've got three municipalities, two of which don't have a sales tax, are now paying a 1% sales tax. So I have a lot of questions on this. My first question is, well, where's that money going to? I talked to the finance department at this company, they have no idea, it goes to Rutland, Rutland, period, 05701. I said, well, there's 05701 has three town halls, so which one are you sending the money to? They didn't know, they have no idea, not even a clue if it goes to Rutland City, Rutland Town, or Mendon. They go, they said, they told me it goes to 05701, the town hall, okay, that tells me a lot. So I also started thinking, as I talked to the president about it, what happens if we as a municipality, we've been kind of considering on the back burner, on the front burner, whatever, having our own 1% sales tax? Well, if all these companies out there are sending it to 05701, where's our 1% sales tax going to go at that time that we possibly pass something like that? Is it going to go to Mendon? Is it going to go to Rutland Town? Or is it going to actually come to Rutland City? Rutland Town's got to be asking that same question, too, if they're smart, because they're the ones that have the 1% tax, but if these companies have no idea which town hall at 05701 to send it to, then money could be coming to Mary Markowski, or going to Mendon, or to Rutland Town. Now, several years ago, and the mayor and some board members that were here at the time may remember, the state didn't even know the difference between Rutland Town and Rutland City when it came to doling out the revenue for traffic tickets, for speeding tickets, for, you know, traffic enforcement. So Rutland Town got, I don't know, twenty-something thousand dollars of, of traffic revenue that was supposed to come to the city. We had a big fight about it, Rutland Town's like, we don't know anything about this, why, why do you think the money came to us?
We're going to keep it.
Well, state says they sent it to you, but it's our money. So there's a can of worms here that's already opened, and I think that we need to investigate somehow what's going on. So I would like to make a referral to Finance, first of all, so that Finance can kind of say, hey, uh, hey, Rutland Town, you know, you're getting tax money that we're, our, our taxpayers are, are paying, and we don't think that's right. I think that a simultaneous motion of mine would be to send it also to intermunicipal, so that we can call up Rutland Town, and we can call up Mendon and say, hey, you guys getting charged this 1% tax, especially Mendon residents, because they're only billing to 05701, a 1% sales tax, and that's going to create a lot of trouble, especially if we and/or Mendon decide to implement a 1%, because if they're just sending it to 05701, then where's that money going?
We'll take that one step at a time, I heard two motions, I'll grab the first one.
First motion is to send to Finance.
Motion to send to Finance?
Just a quick follow-up, I believe that's already open in Finance, the 1% option tax, if, if that's what the referral.
So what I'm sending is the issue of where the money is going that's coming from these companies, and that's why, that's, that's why I, I want to involve intermunicipal in this, Mr. President, as well, because I think we need to speak with our counterparts in the other towns and find out if the same thing is occurring there as well, which I'm quite confident it is.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been seconded, is there any further discussion?
It would be real interesting, because this money goes to the state first, and then comes back, okay? They collect it, the sales tax.
Now, see, that, that's a good thing, that, that the Chair of Finance can answer some of those questions, because I wasn't.
So what's going to happen is, where is the state, so if the state's collecting it all under 05, whatever, that means it's all going to Rutland Town, right now.
Any further discussion? Oh, thank you, City Attorney.
I was just going to say, if I may, if, if the board would like anybody to pursue this, I would suggest maybe we just start with a letter to the town managers, unless you have an idea that it'll be a longer discussion, and we're not obviously going to have any right to that money, so if it's being charged to you erroneously, we won't be able to say to Rutland Town, like, hey, you're getting a bunch of money from Rutland City residents, send it to us, because it's, you know, it's not ours either, so I don't know what we would, you know, we'd have to tell Rutland Town, okay, you go to your vendor and tell them to trace back every 25 cents they took from somebody. So it, it might make sense just to send the letter and find out what's maybe going on, and then.
Oh, yes.
Go from there, I don't know.
Um, I, if I may.
Okay, Alderman Gillum, then Alderman.
I, I think this is a bigger, bigger can of worms you're talking about. That means some people were taxed illegally, and that means the Tax Department will have to go in this major investigation and figure out all these people like you that paid from the city and reimbursed them.
Give them their 10 bucks back.
That could be a nightmare.
Twenty-five, sorry.
But I think, I think we, we need to talk about this, yeah.
Alderman DePoy?
Well, I, I mean, you know, the thing about it is, is that if it's just in, in that one transaction, or several transactions from one company, it ended up to tens of dollars, but you think about what COVID has done with, you know, mail order stuff, I mean, people have, you know, several boxes on their steps almost daily these days, and you could be talking about a lot of money, I mean, a lot of money, and the city taxpayers are, as Alderman Gillum pointed out, being illegally charged, technically, for goods that they're receiving.
If I can, I think the bigger picture here is if the city is going to institute a 1%, I think we need to know how that works.
That's correct.
You know, where does it go, once it, once it's collected, where does it go, and how does it come back to us? So there's got to be something besides 05701 that they're looking at, otherwise, you know, I don't think we could be the only municipalities that share zip codes with, with our neighbors, but I think that's the bigger question, if it goes to Finance, or it goes to the City Attorney, is how does it work? Once it's collected, how does it work, and how, how is the municipality assured that it gets the percent return that it's due?
Alderman Savage?
Yeah, I think the question is, who's collecting it, and how is it determined to whom it belongs? Are they breaking it up by street, are they, like, is there an algorithm that collects the, the addresses of the people to determine what 05701 gets the 1%? And going forward, that's going to be more and more important, who's 05701 tax money is it, and how are they going to get it?
Mr. City Attorney?
Just as long as we're on the topic, so ironically, we just kind of voted tonight to switch to the short-term rental solution from GOVOS, and part of that, I think, will have to be terminating an agreement with Airbnb, but we have an agreement right now with Airbnb to collect the 1% rooms, meals, and entertainment tax, and I did ask them that question when we were negotiating it, because I was afraid that they would send us money that we didn't, you know, that, that wasn't rightfully ours, and then it would be on us to somehow send it to Rutland Town, or, you know, anybody else within our zip code, and they are, I mean, hard to audit, I guess, how they're doing it, but they at least claim that they have software that's sophisticated enough, and that helps because, well, I guess it would be the same situation, by address, they know what is within the city limits and, and what isn't, and so that was their response and was satisfactory to me. Now, they're a much bigger company, and maybe can afford whatever extra sophistication that, that involves, versus maybe this other company's using a different solution that Alderman DePoy was buying from, but there is at least a, according to Airbnb, there is a way to differentiate and get more granular than just the zip code for, for these type of taxing transactions, so there, there should be a way to straighten it out, it, it might just be the expense for the vendor of what, what they choose as their kind of backend software to differentiate between either sales or taxable events in, in certain areas.
Okay, any further discussion? So the motion right now is for the Finance Committee to put on their detective hats and go figure out what's going on with the current payments of the tax, and how that's divided up. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion still passes. All right, and would you like to make your second motion?
And the second motion is to refer the issue to intermunicipal, so we can open a dialogue with the, with Rutland Town and Mendon as to, I'm sorry.
Do you want to send the letter and send?
And the City Attorney.
Okay, so you have a motion to refer to intermunicipal and the City Attorney to open up a dialogue with surrounding municipalities. Any discussion, or any second? We have a second, we have a second. Any discussion? Now that has been seconded, all right, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Still passes, motion still passes, thank you, Alderman DePoy.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any new business to come before the board? Alderman Franco?
Just really quickly, I've been thinking a lot in my capacity of chairing the IT Committee about connectivity and modernizing the city, and one thing that has crossed my mind, just having been to a lot of rural communities like, you know, the size of ours, and the, you know, similar economic features, is that a lot of them have public Wi-Fi downtown, and so I've done some movement just to better understand what the public-private partnership looks like in those capacities, and some places, it's sponsored by a private entity, and I know that Consolidated obviously has a huge footprint in Rutland, they're rolling, they rolled out their Vidium Fiber, which is now fully servicing Rutland, they're sponsoring our downtown, some of our downtown events, and so I wanted to send to the IT Committee just a conversation around a potential public-private partnership, just to see the options there. It's not us committing to anything, just I figured if there is an opportunity for us to get more connection for our residents, that we should pursue it, so that's it.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to refer to the IT Committee, a public Wi-Fi discussion for the downtown area has been seconded, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, Mr. Mayor? Okay, great. Before we adjourn, we are going to set the tax rate, so we are going to adjourn to a time certain, which is tomorrow, Tuesday, July 19th, at 5:30 PM. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President?
You want to second the motion?
Yeah, I can second the motion, yeah.
Okay, second motion, any discussion? Alderman Gillum?
I cannot make it tomorrow, because Tuesday, I'm on the road, and I will be too far away to get here by 5:30, so I will not be present tomorrow. Doesn't mean I'm not involved, but, yeah.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we are adjourned until tomorrow at 5:30 PM.